Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of June 18th, 2025. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Welcome. Counsel, we're going to part from normal business. If I could ask for a motion to add a special, excuse me, special recognition for an important Bristol resident. I'll say it just like that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Before I do that, I'd just like to wish Tim Sweeney happy birthday.
Ah, thank you.
You're important, but that's not actually who we were going to recognize here, but happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
So this evening, we wanted to recognize and we're going to recognize a gentleman who's, well, the business has been, been there for a very long time, 70 years. I've got some cheat notes in front of me. If I could ask Mike and Jan Acquavelli to come up to the podium, if you would? So if you haven't seen this face recently, I did, we all did, saw him in the Phoenix, right? And the recognition of the, he was walking around at the Flag Day and more people were shaking your hands. Thought it was absolutely appropriate and wonderful. Mike, you have been in business for, the business has been there for 70 years, seven zero.
Seventy long years.
Yeah, that's absolutely outstanding.
Enjoy every minute of it.
So I understand, well, let me back up just for a second. The clerk had asked if we could do the proclamation. The administrator had reached out to me recently. I was here a couple of days ago and said, I asked him to reach out to you. He had actually prompted some of this too. And we did this completely last minute tonight. I understand that you were not available at our next meeting and we didn't want it to go too long. We thought it was so important.
Not to interrupt you, excuse me. The reason for that is that I made plans. As soon as I realized I was closing, I made plans so I wouldn't chicken out. It's having a knee replaced. So I got that appointment all set up and then by the time the meeting came, I'd be in rehab, so to speak.
Very good.
The administrator shared with me that you've done a lot of work with the police departments and the fire department. Is that correct? Could you share a little bit? Oh, the administrator shared that you've done a lot of work with the police department and the fire department for shoes.
Well, in Bristol Fire Department, I've been a member for well over 50 years in Bristol here. And I've worked a little bit with the fire department, the police department, whenever the occasion arose. But basically it was with the Bristol Fire Department. From there, I went to the East Province Fire Department. I put 22 years in there. I worked full-time, the East Province Fire Department, full-time at Mellow Shoe Service for 22 years. I liked working 80, 90 hours a week, but you know, in the old days that you did. Not today. I'm not going to say anymore on that. That note.
Mr. Chairman, I can make lots of heels and soles, right?
Excuse me?
Lots of heels and soles.
Boy, I saved a lot of souls in my day.
Mike the priest. So the proclamation in front of us talks about you've been in business for 70 years and you started at age 12. Could you share just a little bit on that?
Well, it's a bit with a family business. My uncle, my mother's, well, how can I put it? My mother's sister's husband ran Mellow Shoe Service. It's Mellow Shoe Service started roughly about 100 years ago at the bottom of State Street. I think one building up from Judge Roy Beans, maybe two, one of those two buildings there. From there, I went to Hope Street where the toy store used to be. And then from there, I went to Wood Street, right at the corner of Wood and State. That, I believe, is where my uncle took over from his father. And the Van Vos built, bought the land, the building diagonally across the street and built the building we're in right now and asked my uncle if he wanted to go. He says, yeah. So we moved in. That's 70 years ago.
Wow. I love the way you told the story in classic Rhode Island fashion. What just used to be and what that used to be. That's, but everybody here knew what you were talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Counsel?
He's got a very important call.
That was just a warning. No, that's all. I shut it all off actually, but it's, that still comes through.
Counsel, did you want to share anything?
Yeah, thank you for being the soul of this community. No, no pun intended there, but had to throw it in there and, and I've known you for a long time through St. Mary's Church and known your family and, you know, I'm glad you're starting a successful chapter of retirement.
Going to try. It's a whole new life now.
What are you and Jan going to do from here?
Excuse me?
What are you and Jan going to do from here?
What are we going to do? Well, first of all, I'm going to have a knee replaced, as you know. And then when I have rehab from that, then we're going to jump on, as soon as I can jump on a plane, I'm going, my friend and I are going to go out to Oklahoma and spend some time with my daughter and son-in-law.
Very nice.
Out in the, in Oklahoma, you know? They got a few bulls in the backyard and they go hunting and fishing. I'm going to the outdoors. And then God knows, everybody's been telling, all my friends that live all over the country, you've got no excuse now. He says, come down and see us. We will. Yeah, a little bit of time, but we got plans. Good Lord willing, we'll do it all.
That's outstanding.
So Diana, Diana will see you a little more often, don't you, right?
Yeah, as long as they're there.
We'll recognize them too. That's okay, right? Last one to bring home fries though, you know? It's delicious. So Mike, if you could, and Jan, if you could come up along with the police chief, fire chief, the administrator and the clerk so we can take one big picture. Right up in the front, please. Congratulations. I'm going to give this to you. Can you take that with a picture? Yeah, right in the middle.
Smile.
Big round of applause for Mike.
Mr. Chairman, and also I'd like to also acknowledge Jan for all the years of hard work decorating storefront. We're really going to miss that on the holidays. Every, every misses a holiday, right?
We never did.
Yeah, thank you.
Few more weeks for you.
Outstanding. Thank you both. Congratulations. Let's wonder. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Q?
The next item on the agenda are the town council meeting minutes. There's the May 25th, I mean, sorry, May 28th, 2025. Those are motions only and the town council executive session minutes for May 28th as well.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, stated. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the public hearing. We have Moreno LLC doing business as Don Patron Mexican Grill in Cantina. George Moreno, 200 Gooding Avenue. This is a modification of the BV intoxicating beverage license for the expansion of the premise, and this is to include the outdoor seating area.
So before I open the public hearing, just a point of clarity, is the applicant here this evening for, excellent, okay? So I'm going to ask you to come up because I'm going to assume that you're going to speak in favor of this. For clarity, the application in front of this council was for placement that would have used handicap parking spots. I understand that the applicant had conversation with the Department of Community Development and the building inspector was proposed for moving it and we can talk about that in a moment, but I wanted that before we had public discussion that it was clear that it was not what was in the packet, but a proposed change on it. So I am now going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Now it's your turn. Go ahead. Are you here to speak in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is George Moreno and my address, although, 200 Gooding Avenue, yes.
Okay. And you are here to speak in favor?
Yes.
Floor is yours. Go ahead. So you were asking this council for?
For permission to have an outdoor patio and be able to sell liquor outside on our, when I bought the place, we used to have permission to have a patio type and then I think it was pandemic.
That's right.
Rules during that, then we took it off for the past two years and now we're going to be able to see if we could reinstall the patio outside and we're willing to, if you want us to change the patio on the other side, not intervene with the, with the handicap parking spaces, we could do anything else, yeah.
Okay. So the, our application, the application that's in front of us showed it on, we'll call it the west side.
Where it used to be, yeah.
Right. And then it's proposed to be on the north side or closer or closest to Gooding, correct?
Perfect. And then, anyway, yes, allow me to.
So you're okay with that? So if this council, and we can, we'll talk about that after the close of the public hearing. If we so choose to approve it, then we would then say we'll follow the recommendations of community development. Okay, all right. Any questions for the applicant? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, stated. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is B2. This is WKOC LLC doing business as Portside Tavern, Richard Corenti, 444 Thame Street. This is a modification of the BV intoxicating beverage license for expansion of premise, and this is to include the portion of the outdoor seating. I do want to note that there is a received at meeting item from Kara Cromwell at 649 Hope Street with a letter of concern. There's also a fiction page from, that's attached to that and it's on the council dais.
Thank you. Okay, so as clerk stated, this is a public hearing. We're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor?
Hi.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, good. I'm not really sure what I'm supposed to say here, except I would like to have my live music outside.
So what's in front of us this evening for this public hearing on this part of it is for modification of the intoxicating beverages, so the liquor license on it. So your, the public hearing portion of this is about the expansion of the liquor license outside. So not the, but we will be speaking about the dancing and entertainment license also upcoming agenda portion of it.
Okay, see, I didn't really find out that this was even going to be what we were talking about today until a few hours ago. So I'm not 100% sure of what I'm supposed to be asking for here. I, is it about the patio? Is it about?
So you're in, I, I'm sorry, I can't speak to that part of it. What's in front of this council, there's two questions. What's this public hearing right now that we are in?
Yeah.
This portion of it is specifically for expanding the intoxicating beverage license. That's how it is advertised, liquor license, for lack of a better way of saying it. And it has, it would have to do with the, to include a portion of the outdoor seating is how it's worded.
So, so I met with the, with Steve early today and I think he gave me a little clarity on it.
Steve Greenleaf, is that what you meant?
I believe that's the name. I'm sorry. I'm tired of it.
It's all right. So Steve Greenleaf for the public is our building inspector.
So I guess the, the small patio that I have in front was, was, I guess, only allowed to serve out there because of COVID rules and now I have to reapply for that? Is that correct?
You've got it, yes. So
That's what I'm asking for then, yes.
As the last public hearing that we had just a moment ago, COVID allowed for a lot of flexibility for outdoor dining, that those were extended, but of course that is now expired. So you're in front of us to look for that continued usage.
Correct. Then, yes, that is what I'm asking for. It's been there for five years, holds about 30 people. It's a beautiful view of the water. It's a detriment to my business.
Counsel, any questions for the petitioner?
Well, just, just one quick question for, for you or for anyone. So this is only to allow alcohol to be served on the side patio that has been there for a long time. So you've been doing it without the license expansion, is that correct?
Unknowingly, yes. I didn't know that it wasn't included. I mean, I've just recently renewed it. I mean, I didn't know that the rule on that had changed recently.
So not any of your other things like the back and the back?
Well, the back area, I'm not serving out.
Right, right.
I'm not, I'm not serving any food or anything like that. The only thing I did do is I, I do have chairs out there. It's more of like a smoking section. So people, when they go out to smoke, they don't disturb anybody up in front.
So just to be clear, this is only on the side that has been existence for a while?
I believe so. I'm not sure.
Is that right, Mr. Chairman?
That is what's in front of us, yes.
I thought I was just coming in today for the, up until a few hours ago, I thought I was just coming here for the, for the music part. So I, I'm a little behind. I apologize. But we do have another area on, on the outside. I'm not serving any food over there. There's no bar. There's no nothing. But I do have a couple of chairs and tables and if that's what we're talking about as well, then we're talking about that area as well.
Oh.
It depends on what you mean by serving. Like, like you, a waitress doesn't come out there and serve you. You can't order food over there. You know what I mean?
I think that, I think it would be best right now because I don't, I, you know, from some of the stuff that I've read, that that's not been approved by other boards. You're talking about in the back. I think you should stick to just the side because it's been going on
Sure.
for years. I mean, I, I don't think anybody real, I don't think we realized either that you did not have a license for that. So, and I think, so that, you know, we've seen your musicians on this, on the corner, like very close to Thame Street. So I think that might be the next session, but I just want to make sure that we're just doing one thing at a time because I think there's some more questions on other, other newer things.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions from the council? No?
No.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Please. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name's Kara Cromwell and I live at 649 Hope Street.
Welcome.
I've prepared some remarks, but they cover both licensing questions that Portside is here for. So I hope you don't mind if I, do you want me to cover, I don't want to repeat myself and they're kind of intermingled.
So we need, this is a public hearing just for the expansion of the liquor license.
Okay.
But so you know, we will be going through D2 and D13 that pertain to this. You are certainly welcome to share additional information when we discuss the dancing and entertainment license.
Okay, but do you mind if I hit the dancing and the, the points are interwoven?
If it's brief, as it pertains to that, yeah, absolutely, because I want to stay true to the public hearing at hand. So, but yes.
I would love to skip around, but, okay. Good evening again, Kara Cromwell, 649 Hope Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I emailed the document that I believe will be part of the record for this evening, but I appreciate the time here as well. I'm here to start voice my strong opposition to the requested expansion of Portside's BV and entertainment licenses. I want to emphasize that I support Bristol business and I want our local restaurants to be successful. I want Mr. Corenti to be successful, but I don't think that his desire to make more money should outweigh my piece, the piece my neighbors and I have a right to enjoy. I value the safe and pleasant neighborhood I've called home for 55 years and I believe we're going down a very bad path with the applications you're considering this evening. Very simply, this establishment routinely violates the licenses they have along with other town ordinances and I respectfully suggest this bad behavior not be rewarded by expanding their licenses to allow them to take their non-compliant operation outside. Approval of these licenses sets a dangerous precedent and opens the door for Thame Street's other BV licenses that would truly degrade the quality of life in this neighborhood. Let's start with what's been happening lately. Portside has been operating an unlicensed nightclub since October of 2024. Their activities violate both their entertainment license and the BV license they are currently fortunate to hold. I cannot find a definition of nightclub in our town's ordinances, so I'll share the Oxford Dictionary definition. An establishment for nighttime entertainment, typically serving drinks and offering music, dancing, et cetera. Here are some pictures. As you know, the BV license is meant for restaurants and alcohol is meant to be served only at tables. It says so in the ordinance. And I quote, "The establishment granted this license shall submit a floor plan which shows the layout, including all tables, seats, bar seats, et cetera, where alcoholic beverages may be served." Patrons may be able to order food at every seat in the establishment, including all bar seats. The licensing board shall determine the total number of bar seats as part of the town's policy goal of maintaining restaurants and neither bars nor nightclubs under this class of license. Portside was fortunate to transfer Redliffson's liquor license, which allows a closing time of 1:15. But the ordinance states, "Any establishment that has a pre-existing license that allows a closing time later than 11:00 PM and wishes to maintain such later closing time shall remain subject to all previous conditions, including without limitation with regard to the service of food during all of the time that alcohol is being served and also the limit of no more than six seats at any bar and no seats at any service bar." In other words, this license is intended for a restaurant, not a bar and certainly not a nightclub. Portside's latest application for a BV license was issued November 27th, 2024. The sketches of the bar areas that Portside provided as part of their application showed tables in their renovated function room, known as the engine room. The presence of these tables would make it appear as if they intend to operate in compliance with the terms of their BV license. However, beginning in October, a full month before the current license was issued, they had already started the nightclub use of the engine room. The music would start at 10:00 PM on Friday and Saturday to accommodate their college-age patients, patrons, and note from the photos, there are no signs of tables in the engine room. Please don't take my word for it. I invite you to view the videos that Portside posted on their own social media channels. They're also available in QR codes, which I provided to the council. I want to pause and point out that the images were quite disturbing to me as I reflected upon what could happen in the back room of an unlicensed nightclub packed with college kids drinking. I believe that few people seem to be aware of the situation and I think it's because of the misleading applications that were provided in the past and are being reviewed this evening. This brings us to the entertainment license, which was issued August 23rd, 2024. This license was granted based on a drawing that showed entertainment and no, and no mention of a DJ only in the bar area. I'm sure that Mr. Corenti is going to contend that the entertainment license does not include the engine room in any of the drawings because it was not complete at the time. But he certainly knew what he'd planned to do because just 43, because just 43 days later, after getting his, this nightclub and entertainment license, he held a grand opening for his nightclub approximately 10 inches from my property line. Again, just 43 days later, he opened the engine room, advertised only on social media, DJ at 10:00 PM. Come check it out. This nightclub has played music at times that is so loud that my windows rattle and I cannot sleep with my head in between two pillows because the noise of the noise emanating from his property. And no, this was not at 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM, but after midnight, which is in violation of their entertainment license and the town's noise ordinance. I have proof of all of this, phone records, texts, tip 401 entries. One night I called down to Portside and spoke with the manager who told me that they had a license and that the music would stop playing sometime after 12:30. At the time, I didn't know better or I would have called the police at the moment. I also reached out to the owner directly. Unfortunately, the exchange left me feeling intimidated. And so let's get to tonight's agenda item. What Mr. Corenti is asking for this evening is an expansion of both of these licenses. The BV license, number 10, the sketch that accompanies this application shows his front porch and the small square where he's been taking it outside since the pandemic. What he is not showing in the application to extend his liquor license is what he has constructed with no evidence of permitting by the town or HGC. A patio adjacent to the engine room that is marked with a sign that says Beer Garden. Note that there is a gravel area in between these two patios. I'm unclear whether this will be another area in which he intends to serve liquor, but to be crystal clear, neither the beer garden or the gravel area appear on his liquor license, liquor license application. Moving on to the expansion of his entertainment license, in this version of his application, he includes the engine room. In other words, he's now seeking permission to use the space for entertainment, which he's already been doing for eight months. And once again, he is showing tables in there, even though we've seen that they get moved. However, he's not showing tables in the dining room. If this license were approved, the entire dining room could be a licensed dance floor. For the exterior portion of his application, you'll note that the drawing of the patio appears to be a square, which would match the COVID era patio. However, you'll also notice that it stretches the length of the building and that the live music would be in the back corner of the new patio, which again, was not reviewed by HGC and therefore is not permitted. I am concerned that the approval of this license would allow entertainment on this entire swath of the property. It would also create a situation where the front patio is licensed for alcohol, but the back patio and the middle gravel area would only be licensed for entertainment. I have a hard time believing that the back patio, which has been labeled a beer garden, would be alcohol-free. But if he intended to abide by the license he supplied for, I can't reach any other conclusion. Lastly, this is the advertisement for the Portside Fourth of July Outdoor Concert Series and they've scheduled three acts, the 26th, the 27th, and the 28th. I don't know where these concerts will take place or how they will control the crowd and keep the area safe. We have amazing public safety officials in this town and I don't think they should be presented with another challenge heading into the Fourth of July. We have the safest town in Rhode Island. We have the third safest college town in the country. People come here all the time because it's not Newport. As a taxpayer who has paid nearly $200,000 in property tax since owning this house and I hope to live here long enough to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars more, I'm vehemently opposed to the expansion of these licenses. They're a real threat to the quality of the life here and I will continue to advocate to support the wonderful community we have. Thankfully, I know I'm not alone. I have a petition on very short notice, signed by 51 people who live in the neighborhood who share my concerns. I will leave this with the town clerk. Thank you for your time and I apologize about the intersection of issues here. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Before you leave, counsel?
I have a question.
Kara, I agree a lot with what you've said in terms of the back patio, the new one that's like without any approvals and the work that needs to be done on that and certainly on the loud music. I mean, you know, as you know, and I think you pointed out in your letter, that we've worked really, really hard in this council to try to keep it to restaurants and, you know, to not have bars in night, nightclubs. We never really had nightclubs officially, but, and so I don't think we want to go back down that road, but that's a different discussion. I'm just curious on your view on the sort of COVID area side patio that has been going on for ages that no one really realized didn't have a license expansion part of it. Do, is that presented a problem in the neighborhood? That, you know, because I think they, I mean, I don't think people are out there that late at night, are they?
Truthfully, you know, during the pandemic, I ate a lot of black bean burgers from Portside, hoping that, you know, their business would be healthy. I don't have any concerns on that small patio. I never said anything when the entertainment started there because again, everybody else was enjoying it. It, was it disturbing to me? Yeah. I mean, you know, you're, there's hours of music that you don't choose. But in the spirit of, you know, people are enjoying al fresco dining, I didn't say anything. I have no concerns for them to have a liquor license in the place where they have a liquor license. But I feel like this is all tied together. They, they need to, you know, they need to behave on the other areas of their liquor license. If you allow them to expand into this area and the backside of Portside without enforcing what's there, i.e. supposed to be tables, it's not supposed to be, you know, you're supposed to be eating, not dancing. Then it, it seems like it's all tied together. If, you know, if you all can work the magic in saying that, you know, yes, on this little square, no in there. yes, on this little square, no in there, beer garden, which I just don't know how it can say beer garden open until 12:00 AM and there's this idea that somebody's not planning on serving beer there until 12:00 AM.
You know, and I think that if we... Sorry, go ahead.
So again, I want his business to be successful. If the outdoor dining, they have the front patio, if this, if the COVID-era patio is, you know, something that, you know, is the will of the town, great. I just think that he should abide by the licenses he has before we, you know, crack open Pandora's box here. And then I think there's also the precedent that you need to consider, which is the other dozen liquor licenses on Fame Street? Again, we're not looking to be Newport. And I'm concerned that if you, you know, what's the difference? You know, is it next year, it's the gravel area and then, and they just, and then we have an outdoor, you know, area that, again, I sent a picture of the distance between the back, the engine room and my property. It's 10 inches. And in looking through other places in, you know, in the ordinance, in, you know, town ordinances, even a special permit for a nightclub, you need a buffer, and the buffer is significant. So I think it's the, you know, unintended consequences, which is, you know, always where we land here. But I don't know, I feel like you're opening Pandora's box a bit.
Well, could I, I'd like to just ask our solicitor a question. See, I mean, I, given the fact that they've had like, you know, like Andre Asano, for example, like, you know, pretty low-key, non-amplified music pretty much outside there, and they've been doing this for the last several years. I think it's a matter of whether or not you can keep the section separate because I agree with you and everything you say about all the other pieces of the property. And, you know, when you say the patio and the beer garden, I don't even know if that is because there's references in our packet to, you know, if the town approves the roof kind of thing. I don't even know, you know, from what I gather, there's not a whole lot of stuff going on with the town because, as you mentioned, CDC, other, I mean, the historic HDC. So I'm curious, Mike, if we were to, because they've been doing this right along, we can limit it, can't we, to very specific area?
By law, you have to limit it to a very specific area. You can only grant a license for a specific area drawn on a map, and the alcohol service, whether it's just drinking it or bringing it to them, can only be maintained within that area. If they go outside, this is approved anyplace.
Right, right, right.
If they go outside of that area, you can have a show cause hearing and take the license back.
So if they wanted to expand to, at another point, to a back patio, that's a separate, they come back for further expansion, right? That's what I thought. And I think most of the other people in the neighborhood, I mean, I understand your point because I wouldn't, you know, I'm not a big fan of some of these licenses, but a lot of them already have these licenses that they've bent before us to do their expansion to the outside, couple of tables that they have, so forth. So I just wanted to clarify that because it seems like, I think there's just a multitude of issues here. And I, like, I can't see why, I understand what you said as to why they start at 10, but, you know, to start at 10 and to have that kind of really loud music. I mean, I, I didn't really read your packet until like this evening, a little bit, you know, maybe like around 6:15 when I got home. And I, I agree that, like, I don't think anybody really wants to have that. I don't want to see that start up again. We've curtailed it a great deal. It used to be like way worse, this situation. We still have some places, but we don't have what we used to have in terms of galleries, et cetera. And I don't want to see that start up again. So I'm in agreement on the bigger picture. And one of the issues I have, we're not talking about the entertainment license. But unfortunately, the way it is in Rhode Island is this one entertainment license for no matter what you want to do, you don't have a harpist, you have to have the same entertainment license if you're going to have like a gigantic, you know, dance party. And I think that is something that we've brought up many times at this council, and it's a really state issue that needs to be addressed. But I do appreciate your situation. I'm just like, I'm just wondering about like these, this one area that everybody thought was already licensed.
Right, but the other bit of the expansion is that it allows for the nightclub activity in the back. Well, they don't have tables, they're supposed to have tables.
I'm saying that...
Wait, wait, wait. So this is the, the public hearing portion of this is, and I know the question was asked, it's okay. But the public hearing portion of this is for the expansion of the liquor license. So we need to stay in there. This is, we will get to, and you'll have an opportunity. What I'm going to ask this council to do is combine D2 and D13 so we can have a holistic conversation. I agree with your point, but we advertise this as we must advertise this. This public hearing is about the expansion of the liquor license, and the actionable steps that we'll take will be on D2 and D13, right?
However, the language about the requirement for tables is actually in the liquor, is the liquor ordinance. That's where the language on the tables is. You have to have tables to be able to serve alcohol. You cannot serve it in an open dance area. So it kind of sounds like it's the entertainment part of the evening, but it's actually the liquor part of the evening is where the tables come into play.
So to be clear, I'm not disagreeing or agreeing. I'm saying that we can get into the particulars of that, and we will just in a moment. So I, the opportunity on the public hearing is literally that, to hear from yourself and anybody from the public. And then we can, you can, I'll allow you to speak again when we get to the, we'll call it the meat and potatoes of it, the actionable, actionable portions that we can, because we can't take action on this besides have a public hearing and then close the public hearing. Then our next step will be to say, yes, this is, or no, we will not. So, but was there any other questions for Kara?
No, not for Kara. I just think that it can be, like, we have to be very clear on what is contained. Like, if we're going to do what's been existing, then it has to be very, very clear because if it goes anywhere else, then that, we can take action on that. That's all I'm saying.
No, I agree with you.
Kara, I just had a quick question. Go ahead, Tim. I just had a quick question. So the engine room is when they violate and they go over their time, that is when you hear the loud music? Is it, is it specifically the engine room or this beer garden? That's, do they come outside and drink, and then they're very, very loud? That, like, I'm just trying to understand because we have a patio.
Yeah.
We'll drink that we want to do liquor on. This is how I understand in my head. We have a patio to the side, he wants to do the liquor, and then he wants to have some music there. But then there's a separate issue where there's the engine room, where we have this, the nightclub. And I want to just get to your point. Where does that noise really bother you in the evening where you can't sleep? Is that, is the engine?
That's the engine room. That's the 10 to 12, Friday and Saturday.
10 to 12, okay.
I'm saying 10 to 12 because that's what they would be licensed to end at 12.
Yep.
But it doesn't. And it's, it's dance, it's house music. It's oohs, 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 it's that.
The bass.
Yeah, it's the bass, and it's, you know, it's rattling my windows.
Right.
And yeah, that has been historically the noise issue.
Okay, okay. Just want to make...
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mary. Mary, I think it would be important to be very clear about where this expansion would be. I think you hit the nail on head. Kara, I do want to thank you for putting together such a systematic analysis of what was going on and bringing it to us. I appreciate that, and I think it was very important for you to do so. One of the questions I have, maybe for the solicitor more than anything, is we had talked about containing this in a specific area, the service of the alcohol. Now, let's say that there is that beer garden off to the side, or I think you go into the engine room and out a side door to the beer garden or something like that, is that?
You can walk up the driveway and get there as well.
You can walk up the dr... Okay. So would people be, would folks be able to take their drinks from the patio and walk them over to the beer garden?
Absolutely not. You cannot consume or you cannot be served in an area that is unlicensed.
Okay.
It's no different than walking out into the sidewalk of the street and drinking. You cannot go somewhere else on the premises and drink where it's not licensed.
Okay, and then the responsibility is usually on the owner to make sure that that's not happening?
Make sure that their patrons only consume in the licensed premises.
Okay.
If I may make just one small point of clarity here. So this particular expansion where it's that southwest portion of underneath the awning, that is under review for the council because prior to 2025, the COVID executive orders allowed businesses to extend their liquor service on private property without getting a license from the town. So when he had that patio there, it wasn't that he wasn't not in compliance. The executive order allowed him to serve food and alcohol there.
Right.
This is for him to be in compliance because he has been using that for the past five years. And I believe that ended in February 2025. So when this came up, we had him extend that so that way he's in compliance with the liquor license going forward. So just those couple of years were allowable through the executive order. So just, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, okay, so that this is, I want to make sure that I understood everything that you just said there, Melissa. This, we're not just talking about expanding this to the patio. We're talking about expanding it to under the awning.
There is, the awning was pre-approved before, that had always been in front of there. It's just that one portion to the south of underneath that awning. And there is nothing here about the beer garden or that patio that runs between.
Right.
This is specifically for that one strip.
Okay, that's, that's where my mind was the whole time, so.
There are two awnings, though, don't get confused. The beer garden is under an awning.
Okay.
They're like sails. Yeah, so there's two sets of patios that are under awnings.
I didn't know where the other one was.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to make sure.
Two sets and a gravel area in the middle. I think a sight visit would be great.
I think that what happened in some ways is like the petition in Mr. Carenti's mind may very well be for the whole outdoor area. But I think that, you know, like the patio that was the COVID patio is usually pretty well attended, people just having lunch, dinner, whatever. So I think if we were to approve just that section, so in my head, I'm separating these things out because I, that whole other issue that you've raised on the noise starting at 10 o'clock, the outdoor beer garden, that raises a lot, a lot of issues and concerns. But this has sort of been going on, and I, you know, I think people like look forward to being out there on the waterfront, you know, like that. So, you know, we have to be like very, very clear in whatever we approve that it is this particular area only. And then anything else that he wants to expand to, he'd have to come back for a separate thing. And as you pointed out in your letter, I mean, there's a lot of questions as did it need HDC approval, other town approvals, et cetera, on that patio in the back. And then, then the whole idea of the dancing and entertainment license is very, very interesting, as I said, because, you know, like, when you do it and you've got like just an acoustical guitar is one thing, but then to have a DJ that's blasting the music at 10 to midnight is another thing. And like how we separate that out, that's what I think a little more of a challenge. But I think for this, if we're going to do it, it's going to be just that one area already exists.
Yeah.
And I agree with you, Mary. I think we're just going to need to carve that out, like that side patio. We allow the liquor to continue, which I'm in agreement with you on that one. And then I think, you know, if we allow any entertainment, it should just be like an acoustic guitar, but it ends.
If I may stop.
Yeah.
And here's why. And if it feels like it's really important that we stay on target with a public hearing. The clarity for process here is that the council or anybody like ours must allow the public to speak in a public hearing, right? The distinction that I'm making there is that we do not need to let the public speak in a non-public hearing. So for example, D2 and D13 are not a public hearing. It has been the council's practice to allow the public to speak. We want to hear from the public even though we are not required to. So a public hearing requires it, D2 and D13 do not. But know this, we will allow public input on those agenda items. I make that distinction because right now it's, let's talk about it, and that's your opportunity in some places. Here, you will be able to speak about it as we dig into the expansion of the liquor license and the dancing and entertainment license. So if it feels like we're kind of being abbreviated here, we're not. It's just the way the process works. So you will get an opportunity, if you so choose, whether it's you or anyone else in the public that would like to speak on it, we will certainly allow it, okay? So I would, is there any other questions for Kara? Because I'd like to ask if there was any other public that would like to speak. We're on the speak against at this portion, but any questions for Kara?
I don't have questions for Kara, but I do have some comments that I need to take care of on this item.
Okay, do you want to, are you able to do that on D2 and D13? Or does that need to happen?
I have a question, actually, here, probably even more for Richard because for one, you know, well, first of all, let me just make a brief statement. You know, we try to be business friendly, but being business friendly, let's not confuse that with being, you know, abusive to neighbors or override things with neighbors. That is not something that I would stand for, you know? It's wonderful to have business in town, but when you cross the line and you be in some way that's respectful and not really answering in a way that's really respectful, then that doesn't fly with me. It really doesn't. The other thing is, you know, and Kara already alluded to, the sketches that we have before us are sketchy, okay, literally, you know? And with that being said, you know, next time, I think that's, this would be unacceptable because it's very difficult to really distinguish what is to be enforced and what's in existence and what to be added to. I'm looking here and I'm trying to figure out how many areas would there be, how many serving bar areas will they be altogether? Or they're being requested at this point? Could you answer that question, Richard?
I don't really follow your question. There's two bars, I guess that's what you...
Okay, I'm looking here, okay, in the mechanical room, if I understand correctly. I'm looking at two areas, and again, that's why this is very sketchy. I can't hardly figure out what's what, but I'm seeing two bar areas to serve inside?
Correct.
Okay, and do you request one outside?
No, I'm not putting a bar outside, no.
But you're requesting to serve outside, though, correct?
Well, on the patio, like, there's tables, food, dinner, yeah.
Right.
But I don't have like cocktail people going around just selling cocktails. I mean, in fact, you know, I don't know if I'm going to get a chance to rebuttal everything about what she just said, but like, nobody's ever been served a drink standing up in the middle of the restaurant. You always have to either go to the bar or be sitting at a table. The only, there's been two or three times where the tables were removed. There was my grand opening, and there was Halloween. Those are the only two that come to mind. I won't do it again. In fact, after she sent me her first text message complaining about the, about the noise, I canceled the DJ. There wasn't another issue until graduation week. And graduation week, there was, there was a lot of people there. I had to stop letting people in for like the last hour and a half I was open. It was, I hit capacity. Like, it was, it was just a full night. But I haven't done a DJ since she texted me about that. She sent me a message with concerns about her rental property because she has, she rents out part of her property. And totally understandable, totally fine. But I don't believe I was ever disrespectful to her, too. I don't know if you've seen the message between me and her. I'd be happy to show you my end.
I saw, no, I have both, we have both.
Well, you only have what she showed you. I can show you the whole thing, though. And I don't know what you have, you know what I mean? But I'd be happy to show you the whole thing. Nobody's ever, nobody's ever told her that I'm allowed to do certain things. I don't really know where she's getting at a lot. I feel like she's made a little bit of a mountain out of a molehill. I canceled the DJ immediately afterwards, we haven't done it since. You know, I'm trying to be compliant, you know what I mean? I'm willing to sacrifice. Again, there was no issue. In fact, we did this for almost four months, I think, before she finally said something. And so I thought everything was okay. I didn't think we were making too much noise. And then when she did, I thought that first time was because either somebody opened a window. I wasn't there that one particular Saturday. I was waiting my son in a wrestling tournament. But I've been there for all the rest of them, and there's never been another issue. I haven't done a DJ since the, it was really the second time because I thought that first time was just because I wasn't there. It was probably a month afterwards where she said something, and I canceled then. I want to say it was beginning of March, oh, sorry, May, beginning of May. So I mixed up the M months. But I literally haven't done it, and there was no issue until, again, graduation week, which I think a lot of places get overworked on graduation week. I mean, I had pre-security guys on, there was a lot going on there. But we kept everything safe, we did head counts. You know, I don't believe I've been disrespectful to her. In fact, there was, there was another issue, which I'm not going to waste everybody's time on it, too, where she was mistaken about an air conditioner. That cost me thousands of dollars, and she admitted she was wrong about it, and she never really apologized for it, but it's getting to a point where I'm fine with communicating with her. When she has a problem, she hasn't come to me at all. She has my phone number. I would, even the first night, she had, she had a complaint. If she had reached out to me first, I would have taken care of it right away. It's that she called the town on me, I believe, the police. The following week, she did the same thing. Police came down, they said, you're not over the, over the noise at all. They came and looked around, it was no capacity, tables were there, everything was there. There's no DJ, nothing. And they stood outside with me for about a half hour. We weren't over any kind of noise, I guess ordinance would be the word. Yeah. So I'm a little blindsided by all this, I'm sorry.
Okay. And then, and when, when did your, when did your beer garden go in?
We built it in September, when, uh, when the, when the renovation was done. Um, people used to go out back all the time and that was where my trash was. People used to go back all the time and, and hang out by the trash because that's the only place we, I don't know how people smoke in front, uh, until, until after like ten o'clock because people are eating. And nobody wants somebody smoking even outdoors. So that was always like the area where people like hung out and, and, and smoked. So I, i- i- when we were redoing it, we had to rip all that up for the drainage. There was a huge drainage problem with it. There was a huge drainage problem where even the smallest amount of rainfall, I would flood. The, the, the side door, we, 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 we have water pouring in it. And then in the back area where the engine room is now. Water would all come into the walls because my neighbor also didn't have a proper drainage. So a big part of that renovation was we spent a ton of money fixing the drainage and, and, and hooking into the uh. I, I, I'm not good at this type of problem, I cook, you know what I mean? But we fixed that problem for my neighbor at, at the same time. And for the restaurant. Um, so we had to rip up the um, the patio that was there originally for the um, plumbing, I guess would, would be the word. So we made a, 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 a newer one. We just made it nice. You know what I mean? But I used, it's, it's where it is now is where I used to park my car, you know? Um, and where the trash used to be. So that's why, if I had known that, I, 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 I understand it's my responsibility. I didn't know I had to get another. To, to expand it to the, to that because I just thought it was all, it's my property. It's all on, in the same area. The area with gravel she's talking about is where people park their cars. There, there's no intention of, of doing anything in, in that area except for this, this one other music thing that I'm talking about. Because that's where I want to put the, the, the band. Um, but that's it. Like I'm, I'm, I'm not doing a DJ on Saturdays anymore. I, I respected her wishes. I, I canceled it. I still ended up here. Um, the pictures she, she, that I believe I couldn't really see from over here, they look like they're either from Halloween or my grand opening. Maybe possibly um, graduation week. And, and that's it. Like I, I, I had four months of doing a DJ on Saturdays where, you know, you only had thirty, forty people back there. The table stayed there. It was, it was a non-issue and because she never said anything to me, I didn't know there was a problem. Um, she, she, she said that she's out of town for a while and, and just hadn't noticed, I guess. The minute that she said something to me, I addressed it. The next time that, that it happened, I canceled it. Like, you know, I, I just said, all right, enough, you know what I mean? Because I thought maybe that, that first time, I do think it was because I wasn't there. I think the DJ was too loud. Um, I talked to some of my staff to see, yeah, he was louder than all. So I addressed that with him. It was fine again for five, six weeks, then there was another issue when I canceled.
And these concerts that you have advertised for the series, is this for, this is for your engine room or?
Outside in the uh, in the driveway, really. There's, there's, there's gonna be a bunch of people doing a picnic across the park. There's, there's a lot of other things going on. I thought some live music that, 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 that we could hear outside. I've seen other places do it. I, I didn't think it was gonna be that big of a deal. Um, when I came in here, applied for the license, i- it seemed like it was more formality, you know what I mean? Like, because again, I'm not reinventing the wheel here. Um, I just, rather than have it inside, I thought it'd be nice to have it outside for those three days.
Anything else from the council?
I'm gonna skip on the, no, let, let's stay with this item for now.
Yeah.
But I do have a question because he just alluded to something that concerns me.
Sure.
Yeah.
Especially when he's requesting outdoor like liquor, I mean to serve and expand a liquor license and now. He just alluded to something. I have a copy of that, by the way. That was on Facebook.
Yeah.
But I, I'll, I'll like to hold on to that.
Okay, so the, the plan is to have a band in the driveway? Is that the?
That's what I was thinking.
And, and is that contained in the? Not the plan. They, they would have to be contained in the plans, right? To fix a band in the.
I believe that's D thirteen. That's not part of the, the liquor license. So I'd have to pull down to D thirteen, but I believe that the. The expansion of the dancing and entertainment would be on that southwest.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay, can I just comment on that? So my original plan was to have it in what's called the beer garden. When um, just talking to somebody over the last few hours, if we weren't allowed to put anybody over there. The idea was maybe we'd bring in like a flatbed truck and have them play in the parking lot on a flatbed truck. Um, I mean, there's not big bands that are coming. I, I, two of them are two-piece bands. One of them is Andre. Um, and then there, there is a four-piece band for Saturday. We took a pretty big hit with the concerts being moved. And to be honest, half the reason why I did this renovation now. More than half the reason, a big part of it was to service people during those ten days of the concerts. You know, the, the, the place gets, gets overwhelmed. Um, there was, it, it really was, was tough and, 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 and took a lot of effort and. This was gonna be the year where it finally went smooth. And, and then obviously we all know what happens. Nobody else, nobody's fault here, but that, it is what it is. But um, the idea was to try to recoup some of what we're losing during, during, during those ten days.
Mm-hmm.
But aren't you concerned that having a bigger band is going to break the balance between? The, your neighbors and, and having, you're gonna, you're gonna, it's gonna cause another problem. Do you know what I mean? Like, I think it uh, like.
I'm, uh, the solicitor's looking at me and the solicitor's right. We are gonna, I, I appreciate where the questions are going. This is a public hearing for the expansion of the liquor license. We will stop there and thank you for answering the questions. I'm gonna ask, is there anyone else to speak against? Is there anyone else to speak against? Is there anyone else to speak against?
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm gonna take a second just for everyone's clarity is. This is process. This is not for, against, or don't want to talk about something. This is just process. We'll get into it in a moment. So Madam Clerk, if you will.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D one. This is Moreno LLC doing business as Don Patron Mexican Grill in Cantina. George Moreno, two hundred Gooding Avenue. And this is for the modification of the BV intoxicating beverage license for the expansion of the premise. And this is to include the outdoor seating.
Diane, can you speak to this real quick? So I know that you spent time with the petitioner. Obviously, we discussed it just. High level at the public hearing portion. And what's being proposed so this council can know if it so chooses to approve it?
So, and actually, um, Ed Tanner, the zoning officer, uh, had dialogue with the owner and the applicant. And what is being proposed in the petition is an outdoor seating area that encompasses. Um, two existing handicapped spots on the west side of the building. Um, what was proposed in lieu of that was to move. The outdoor seating to the northeast corner of the property. It's um. Uh, there's a retaining wall there separating the, the lots. And there's a pretty nice area. There's already got um. Some barricades, I think, against the parking spaces and rather than eliminate the two handicap or ADA required parking spaces. Um, they could go on the northeast side in front of the building and it wouldn't, wouldn't take up any parking spaces. So I think that was what the zoning officer discussed with the owner. And when the petition came in, it didn't really reflect that conversation. So that's why we documented it and then recommended that it be denied. But if, if it can be modified and moved. To the um, the northeast corner, that would, we would be okay with that.
And the petitioner voiced agreement that he was absolutely fine with that. So, so council? We just need a motion to approve and maybe we can say as uh, recommended by uh, community development and planning. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Yeah, Chairman, I'll make a conditional approval of that. We uh, approve, approve based on the recommendations, but. Uh, they would uh, work with the community development to update the design to the north side of the restaurant.
Mike, did you want to add anything?
I think.
On second.
Yeah, northeast. I think Tim covered it. We're gonna need a new sketch. So as part of the motion, we'll have the applicant. Send in a new sketch. The clerk's office has exactly where it's going to be.
Okay, we'll add that to the motion. Are you okay with that, Tim?
Absolutely.
Wait, your second, Tony's still okay?
That's fine.
Discussion, thank you. Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D two. This is the WKOC LLC. Doing business as Portside Tavern, Richard Corente, four forty-four Thame Street. Modification of the BV intoxicating beverage license for expansion of the premise to include the portion, a portion of the outdoor seating.
And council, if I could get a motion, if you all agree that we could combine D two and D thirteen for discussion. Obviously, we'll need to vote on each item separately, but as discussion goes, I think it makes a lot of sense to include both.
So move.
Second, discussion. Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you also read off D thirteen?
I may. D thirteen, this is Richard Corente, Portside Tavern, four forty-four Thame Street. This is part of the renewal of the dancing and entertainment license, additionally requesting a modification of the license. To include outdoor entertainment and to add a secondary interior location.
Thank you. Council, was there anything that you wanted to discuss initially? What I wanted to ask was, I know that uh, the uh. Through the administrator, I think I'll say it, um, there was a lot of efforts made for research prior to this meeting as it, as it pertains to both of these items. Um, I know that uh, community development, I know the police chief, I know that the um. The building inspector uh, had weighed in. I know the, the fire chief also had weighed in. Uh, Mr. Administrator, can I start with you on it just to? Share current status?
Sure. So uh, the departments had looked into um. The current locations of the uh, permitted areas. Um, so it would be the dining room for, for the sale of alcohol, the dining room. Um, the engine room, which is in the back, is currently permitted. It was grandfathered in. Um, and during COVID, as we, we heard, the outdoor patio that we all know. That's along the street side, uh, south side of the building. Um, that was permitted under COVID and we're just bringing that, it's being brought into compliance now, now that the COVID order is over. Um, so uh. But there was, there was always, uh, as a condition of the transfer of the license, there was always permission to. Excuse me, sell alcohol in that back room, which would used to be a function. That's, is fucking, I, now, the entertainment license, um. We looked at the entertainment, um. There was not uh, any entertainment license for the outside COVID patio. Uh, it was, it was never, uh, it was, was never raised as a concern. So there was. Small performances out there during COVID that carried over. Um. The, we did look into complaints and the chief can talk about that. There were. I think three uh, tip four one ones that the police department received. Typically for a, uh, an anonymous tip four one one, it wouldn't deploy a noise meter. I believe that the officers went out. Uh, on two occasions, uh, the DJ or the manager was on scene and they lowered, lowered the music. Uh, so there was some loud music in the, in the, in the rear of the hope engine room.
Right.
Um. Going forward, uh, the police department's prepared uh, with a complainant to deploy the, the noise meter. At the ni- at nighttime, the interesting thing about the uh, the way the noise ordinance is written, the violation would be on the receiving land. Um, I believe, and Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, the homes on Hope Street, that's residential. So the backyards are the receiving land. Uh, I think at nighttime it's fifty decibels. So sixty during the day, fifty at night, I believe. Um, so at night, fifty is not very loud. There'd be an ambient level taken first. To make sure it isn't something else like road noise or uh. Uh, air handlers on a roof or something like that. Uh, so they'll take an ambient when there's no music playing. When there's music playing, they take another, another uh, reading. So we do have, uh, the town has some tools to use if there are complaints in the future as far as noise. The recommendations when we first got the um. The application for the entertainment would be nine P M on outdoor. Uh, right now, I think it's ten P M by ordinance during the week and eleven.
P M on Fridays and Sunday.
Yeah.
So we, we, our recommendation from the police and I concur, it would be nine P M for outdoor entertainment. Is, and as far as permitting, uh, the outdoor patio was, was permitted. So the patio, we're calling it the COVID area. Uh, that, that was permitted through uh, administratively through H D C. So that is in full compliance. Um, the back room was fully inspected and uh, it's in full compliance. Um, there is a, there is a capacity which the fire chief reviewed with the building official. Um, so they're in, in compliance as of right now, but it will have to be monitored going forward if uh. If we get complaints and sure, there'll be periodic checks uh, during, if, if the, if the entertainment license is approved for that back room. So, uh, I'm, what I'm saying is if the council elects to approve the entertainment for the back room. Uh, the police department has some tools to use and also the fire department has capacity uh, authority. So um. That's, that's uh, the, the research we did. One other, I know this area called the um. The uh, beer garden was uh, pretty much of a surprise to us. Um, there was no permit, uh, but at the time, as the owner stated, there was uh, quite a mess there. Uh, with uh, with water. Uh, it was an area that dumpsters and trash was kept. So they did clean up the area. Patio was put in very neatly. It would not have triggered a uh, a building permit for that, not a, not a, not a patio like that. Or a concrete driveway would not have uh, uh, required that. However, when, after receiving a complaint, uh, the building official went down there and he did notice that there was some fencing put up and. There was now seating there. So, um, there is no, uh. Right now, the application is not for any liquor to be sold in that area or entertainment in that area. If there is, as the solicitor said, that would be a violation, uh, and it would be brought back to the council. So our recommendation from the original uh, application. Uh. Was to allow the entertainment in those areas. We will monitor and we would like it reduced to nine P M. Uh, in outdoors.
And Mr. Administrator, there was a uh, H D C violation, um, but correct or no?
Uh, well, yes. So the outdoor area, which is designated and photographed as a beer garden.
Yeah.
That would be in violation. That would have to get H D C approval. Um, and because there's physical structures there, like fences and screening and stuff, it would require a building permit also.
Yeah.
So that area is not currently in compliance. Uh, as it can, again, that was a little bit of a surprise to the town officials that that area was developed more than just a, a, a concrete patio. Which cleaned up the area and took care of the drainage.
Yep.
So it was, it was an improvement, but then it went a little bit further than uh, we, we were, the town was aware of.
Right. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Solicitor, in terms of. Um. Like review period, we could add like, if we did decide that we wanted to allow the expansion to the patio. Or any kind of entertainment, we could add like review periods and things like that. Is there?
Absolutely. You, you've done that many, many times. You could do a three-month review, six-month, two-month. You can decide it, what would be appropriate.
So there could be some sort of combination of monitoring plus oversight from the council?
Right. Uh, you, you could actually um. Authorize a license for less than one year. And the applicant would have to come back for any further extension of that license.
I just have a question as well.
Like, um, so on the um, entertainment license. Are you able to designate specific areas or to be the whole place? So, I mean.
Absolutely, you can designate specific areas.
So it could just be the main restaurant and bar area, it could be one license, part of the license and then. Like the back room could be another part.
Right.
And then the outside could be another part.
I might be wrong and maybe Melissa, our clerk, can, they already have a license for the main restaurant area, entertainment?
Yeah, they do.
They do. I believe they do.
I think they do.
They're asking this evening to expand that license into the engine room in the back.
That's what, yeah.
In the outdoor.
In the out, outside, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you could set separate hours for both areas.
So the, the problem was is that the entertainment was happening in the engine room, not in compliance with the original license that we had.
There was no licensing, the engine room for entertainment.
Okay.
That's why he's before you tonight.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, remind this council the intern- uh, inside and outside entertainment license requirements. And what I mean by that is, we talked a little bit about when you, when it has to stop. So exterior outside. Uh, during the week is ten P M and then, um, please.
Yeah, so the, the inside, within the confines of the building, any entertainment there on Sunday through Thursday. Would have to be limited to, would need to cease by eleven P M and then Fridays and Saturdays at twelve P M. Any exterior um, dancing and entertainment license would have to be the Sunday through Thursday. Um, until ten P M and Fridays and Saturdays, eleven P M.
So for clarity.
Up to.
So, thank you. So D thirteen, this application uh, is asking for um, dancing and entertainment. Eleven A M to one A M Saturday, uh, ten A M to one A M Sunday, nine A M to twelve. That was the application. So if this council decided uh, that they were going to approve whatever we're, if we are going to approve. Then they would have to comply to do, one A M would not be possible Monday through Friday. It'd have to be eleven and Saturdays would, the latest would be twelve.
But it could be earlier.
So on the, on the, I just wanna, um, on the D thirteen where the dancing and entertainment license is, we require a supplemental entertainment hours, which. So the actual petition that they fill out asks for the hours of. so the actual petition that they fill out asks for the hours of operations.
Not the entertainment.
Dancing and entertainment license. We recently added the supplemental entertainment section, so that way the council is clear on the times for indoor and outdoor entertainment, and so according to the application, the indoor entertainment, Monday through Thursdays until ten PM.
Thank you.
Friday and seven, Friday and Saturday, twelve, Sundays, eight PM, that's interior. And then the outdoor request was from five PM to either nine or ten PM is what they were on their application.
Thank you for that clarity.
Okay.
Counsel? Other questions?
So then, here's the other question I have, and we were talking about it before, but it was all kind of messed up because we weren't able to talk about it, but I know Mr. Crante talked about bringing a truck out with a band and everything like that, under what we have here in terms of the the image that he's, or the, what we call it, the sketch that's been provided to us, that would not be possible under the license that we would give if we expanded outdoor. The one that I see only has live music on the patio.
On the, I'm gonna call it the COVID patio, because I just don't want to be confused with the beer garden that's being said, and so the COVID patio has it in the north east corner of there, and it's highlighted in yellow.
Yeah.
Correct? And then there's also a portion where he has the engine room as well, where it says DJ slash music. And then there's a third highlighted spot which says bar DJ live music, and that's because the renewals are also on here under E1, so it's the same sketch. So that's why you see the three areas of entertainment highlighted in yellow, but the expansion is for the engine room and for that northeast corner on the COVID patio. And it's, to my understanding, that that's where the area of entertainment should be held when the council approves that, but I believe the solicitor would confirm that.
So currently, that area, there is no area on the patio, is there? When I've driven by, I've seen people like in the driveway nearer to the sidewalk.
There was no pre-existing entertainment license for outdoor.
No, I understand, but I mean, when they've been there, which they have had many times, it's been, like, so they want to take a portion of the of the patio itself and take like a table of chairs out of there and.
I believe it says, we'll remove table on there where it says the live entertainment, there's a little arrow, we'll remove table.
Now, what was the purpose of doing that? I'm wondering, oh yeah, what is the purpose of doing that and not keeping it where it currently is?
Do you want to ask it directly?
Yeah, what would be the purpose of putting it up there and not leaving it where you've had it?
Not a hundred percent sure, can I see what you're talking about?
So that's the COVID patio and it's on the northeast corner of the.
I think, I think my work was, I don't want to do this.
Why, excuse me, you should have to go back to the microphone, why do you ask whether or not he's going to have the outdoor entertainment in the same spot in the area that you have witnessed the outdoor?
If you could go back up to, thank you.
It's like, yes, I mean, I've just, I've just driven by and it's usually like a couple of people that I've seen and they're usually on the side, on gravel, aren't they?
So, yeah, the Sunday morning afternoon brunch entertainment started during COVID. When everybody had to be as far away from everybody as possible, everybody wanted everything outside. So when it's nice out, they have played outside on the side of the patio in the driveway area. So, yeah, you're correct.
I mean, even last year, weren't they there last year? It seems like I've always seen, yeah.
It's just Sundays and it's, it's not every artist wants to do it, some do, some don't, you know what I mean, it's, I, it's kind of, I can go away the way, it didn't really matter to me, on a really nice day, if it's not too hot out, but you only really have, you know, four to six, maybe seven a year, where it's the right weather to be out there, because once you get, you know, another month, it's too hot.
Because you've got the, you've got the top on the others.
I have an umbrella, I have an umbrella I can give the people too. But that's, that wasn't really what I was thinking for the, if we're talking about the small concert I'm trying to put together, three days.
Could we?
No, there's a side, just a side patio.
So your intent, if you were to have the entertainment license on the COVID patio, as we're calling it, your intent is to leave the entertainment in the same place that it's always been? Or not? That's the question.
Yeah, I want to leave it in the, in the, in the, in the place that it's always been, but we're talking, if you're talking about Sundays, that, that other concert is something separate.
I agree.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, you know, I would probably, if we did, if we kept doing it on Sundays, it's probably best for everybody if it's where it's been the whole time. But if, I mean, if the only, if the only way to get a yes is to say, we'll do it on that patio, I will. I mean, I just, I lose more tables and chairs that way, it's only so many, you only allow so many people anyways, right? But I would, that's the only way to get to do it, you know what I mean? For me, ideally, I would have had the band on what we're calling the beer garden patio. But if that's not going to be an option, the other, the other idea was pull up a, what you call it, a flatbed. And that way, you know, you could really do something special down there for all the people that are missing out on, you know, something they've grown to love over the last couple of decades.
I'm just trying to be clear, like, because I don't think anybody really wants to necessarily see a stage or anything like that, you know, I mean, on that, that patio is not, the COVID patio is not that big. So, I mean, like, I'm just wondering, like, you weren't intending to make a stage there?
No, no, I, like I said, originally, I would have put the band in what we're calling the beer garden. If that's not an option, I understand, my fault, I'll apply for whatever I'm told to apply for and take it from there. But again, the contingency plan would be to bring in a flatbed, so you get a little bit of height, so it's built in stage, basically, you don't build anything.
But I'm talking, we're not talking about those three nights you're talking about, I'm talking about the other, the regular.
Oh, no, the only other time I'd have outdoor music would be the Sunday brunch, because I don't, that's the only time I really want to do it, you know what I mean, the only nighttime that I want to do outdoor music is those three days. The only other time would be Sunday brunch, which we've been doing for the last five years, and it's six, seven weeks out of the year where it's, it's the right weather for somebody to be out there, it's not.
So that's the only time you do outside?
Yeah, and it's really, I leave it up to the artist, you know what I mean, if that's something they want to do, but again, there's only a few where the weather's right for it, and even when the weather is right, some don't want to be outside. You know what I mean, it's just, you know, it doesn't really matter to me.
And that side patio, you just have the unamplified acoustic music.
Unamplified, yeah.
Yeah, unamplified.
I don't, I mean, they have a speaker. Yeah, they have, it's not like, it's not like, you know, not rocking or anything like that.
Right, right. I'm just saying, an unamplified acoustic would work.
I guess I don't, I don't know what that means, does it mean that there's no electronics at all?
I need everybody to.
It's, they plug in, there's a speaker out there, it's not just, just one guitar and no speaker, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If that's what unamplified means.
Right.
I got them just to cook, guys.
Well, I think we're trying to, if we go with this, what we're trying to prevent is how do you make sure you're not like raising people from the dead, I mean, you, you know, we don't want giant music, but, I mean, the people that we see there, and I saw on one of these things here, a lot of like their schedule of where they were going is like the Cove and, you know, Portside or wherever, they're all kind of similar plate, like the Cove is sort of similar, I mean Sunset Cove, yeah. Similar in the sense that, you know, they, maybe you have like a little amplification to reach the crowd, you know, their place is bigger, more expansive on their grass. But, you know, we don't want to have, you don't need to have giant thing that is like in, in everybody's house and everything else on a Sunday morning or at lunchtime.
No, it's, again, the only.
That's what I'm going with, Mary, I'm trying to say, how do we find that balance, where we can have acoustic, minimal acoustic music out there, but it also provides a balance to the neighbors around there where we're not disturbing them and we're also concluding that hours that are very, very reasonable.
And that is the problem with this entertainment license, being one only.
Again, the only stretch where I think it would be an issue is those three days that I'm asking for, because the only other outdoor music is Sunday mornings, Sunday afternoons, and it's been going on for five years, I don't believe there's ever been a complaint about it. Unless you tell me, unless you're telling me otherwise.
I only, I've only driven by it, I've seen it and I've seen.
It's usually acoustic style, you know what I mean, it's not like hard rock, it's Sunday morning.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Amplified.
Yeah.
No, the more I'm listening, okay, he keeps referring to a three-night, okay, three-day event. Okay, so then I think we should separate the two.
Agreed.
Yeah.
One should, what is, will be allowed ongoing? And what is it going to be the short term? Because, I mean, as it is right now, because then I have more questions regarding that, the three-day event.
So to that end, if, if you said the only time you need outdoor entertainment is Sundays for brunch.
That's the only regular day that we have scheduled.
With exception to these three days.
Correct, I have no other intentions of doing outdoor concerts at night.
So that is what, ten to one, is that what we're talking about?
I think it's eleven to one.
Okay.
Eleven to two, eleven to two, no, ten to one, ten to one, I think you're right, ten to one, she does Sundays.
I believe now it's eleven to two because it's not the bomb.
So then this council will take that as that you are requesting outdoor entertainment, eleven to two, we'll call it Sunday brunch, with exception, we'll have separate conversation about these three days. Everybody clear with that here? Okay, all right, so that takes, that's the outs, that's what your request is, it didn't say we approved it, that's what that request is.
Yes.
And then inside is Monday, well, it's Monday, it's every day, with Mondays ending at ten PM, this is your request, Tuesday at ten, Wednesday at ten, Thursday at ten, Friday at twelve, Saturday at twelve, and Sunday is, sounds like it's only outside, right? Is that what, or it is inside from ten to two? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine, that's, I would just go by your application, so.
There might be, what you call it, Thursday, I thought, I thought was also till either like eleven or twelve, I'm not sure, whatever, whatever the rules are allowed.
This, usually. Thursday, ten PM, it says.
Yeah, your application says ten.
Okay, I might have screwed that up because, you know, I'm dyslexic and I was just maybe thinking weekends. Andre's usually done by ten, sometimes people ask him to play a few extra songs and he goes, he goes a little bit past ten. What's, what's the rule on, like, what's the town allow?
The rule on Sundays to Thursdays is ten.
Okay, then, yeah, ten o'clock then.
Right, all right, so the council's clear and the applicant's clear on what is being requested, right? Okay, so I'd like to give Kara a moment, she wanted to respond.
Thank you, there was a discussion about, you know, the music being on the corner of the COVID patio, and I just wanted to refer to what he has applied for, which again, because of the sketchiness of the sketch, it is, it makes one believe that it is the square COVID patio, but it runs the length of his building. So what he has applied for, and I understand that this may not be what you determined because you've gone down a different path, he has the live music in the corner of the beer garden. It is not depicted in the corner of the COVID patio. And I also, I guess I have a question about whatever music is permitted underneath this outdoor license still needs to stay within the decibel level
Yes, it does.
of the residential district.
Yes, it does.
And during the day, between ten and one, that level is?
I'm going to ask, so the chief and I had this conversation and we're clear on that?
Sixty decibels.
Sixty decibels.
That's in the residential zone.
Which is.
That's waterfront, so if you were in front of the portside, you'd take a waterfront zone reading, which is much higher. But in relation to your property, the officer, if you were to allow the officer to go on your property, they would take a reading from your property and it would be sixty during the day, fifty at night.
I would welcome that.
Just for clarity for everybody, so, just so we can say that out loud, the, the business is in the waterfront district, which has a higher decibel level allowed, but you are not, and anybody that is, butts residential, you must go with the more difficult or the lower decibel level. That's so for your end of things, if the police are on your property, they, it must be sixty decibels or less during the day, fifty or less at night, so that sounds very difficult to me, so to achieve, saying that out loud, so, because fifty decibels is normal speaking, so.
Which is why it's been unimaginably loud.
Okay. What other clarity does this council need? I know for myself, I want, and I think it was just pointed out, that the outdoor area that we speak of is the patio area that has been in existence for quite a while. Side note, this council will be changing the way applications come in on a go-forward basis. We are going to change this ordinance and it's, the, we require, we're going to, we are going to require photos, we're going to require clear measurements, we're going to require, it very, I want it so if you live in South Carolina, this comes in front of you, you understand clearly, whether it's this application or anyone, you understand clearly what is current and existing, what is being proposed as changes, because we spend a lot of time on, on very unclear things here, so this, to me, this expansion includes the engine room, which is the large room in the back of the building. It would also include the patio area, and if I were to explain it myself, I would say, looking at Portside from Thame Street is on the right-hand side closest to the sidewalk and approximately twenty feet deep, but I may be wrong with that measurement. Does anybody, are we clear on how large that area is? That, that improved area recently approved, and how about this? How about if we use the approval as, as the guidance for how big it is? What I mean by that is this was, this got a building HDC approval and it had X amount of feet on it, right? If we use that as the approved area, that would make sense? I'm looking at you, Diane, sorry.
I think you kind of lost me, Mr. Commissioner.
I'm, it's okay, I'll make it clear again.
So because it was existing, the recent permit, I think it was just, you know, to sort of put a new bottom on what was there, a new floor on what was there, I'm not sure if there were actual dimensions with that permit, there may have been prior permits, but I don't want to say for sure.
I'm trying to be, and I know it's very difficult to do so, but the patio area kind of goes down, it's a little bit vague over there, so it's that first patio area on the right-hand side if I'm looking directly at the portside, not all the way down the driveway, just that first portion near the driveway, that's how I envision it, I don't know if my colleagues envision it differently.
Maybe we should.
Go ahead.
Like, if it gets approved, it should be.
Like, even for the liquor license, you know, we can say the southwest portion, but maybe there's a space that would come back, maybe we can, you know, our inspector can go visit, go actually measure the area that we're talking about so that we know, because we are, we, I think we all know what we're talking about because it's been there for a while, but, I mean, we want to make sure that's the only space that's defined, particularly as it relates, in my view, to the liquor license, because I have a, like, a bigger issue with the entertainment license and the expansion, because you can't really stop anything, as I've said many times from here, you want to have, and you can have anything once you have that license, and, you know, there's no way to say, we, you can say unamplified, you can say whatever, but, you know, I don't know how you can do it, so that's, that's always been an issue with entertainment licenses for me, they have like a big problem with them, because there isn't multiple kinds that you could get, you know, the state doesn't allow us to do that like we have a liquor license, beer and wine, BV, et cetera, so I think we should end up measuring that area just to leave that blank, like, even if we approve it, we just leave it blank, to fill that in, you know, before the, before the license is given, should only take like a little bit of time to go measure that out. But I think we should measure it out so that we know what we're talking about, Diane, you would go, you know what we're talking about, right? So you would go with them and, you know.
Is the council okay with, with having Diane weigh in on that portion of it, she's, in that way, if we approve the exterior, that's, that's a nice way of handling it, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so what's in, so we have two things in front of us, one, the expansion, and we were talking about the liquor expansion, let's talk about that first. Is that expanding, that's the engine room and the outdoor patio? Right?
Right.
Okay, and then we have a dancing and entertainment, and we're going to vote on these separately, but just for all on the same page, we have dancing and entertainment in front of us, and that was outdoor, that was.
Engine room already has the liquor license.
Has the liquor, we just, it's.
It's already been expanded.
My apologies, my apologies, so dancing and entertainment for the engine room, the outdoor patio is the expansion on it, correct?
So you say the engine room already has a dancing and entertainment?
Liquor, I misspoke, I apologize.
Okay.
Yes, so this is, so the dancing and entertainment, the request is Monday through Thursday through ten PM, it's actually seven PM to ten PM. Friday is eight PM to twelve AM, Saturday is eight PM to twelve AM, Sunday is ten AM to two PM. This is all, that would be the interior of the building, and then the exterior of the building was Sunday brunch, and then we have those three special events, but Sunday brunch was, anybody remember? And then we have those three special events, but Sunday brunch was, anybody remember, was it uh, ten to two, eleven to two?
Eleven to two.
Eleven to two? And then the special uh, six twenty-six, six twenty-seven and six twenty-eight. I think that's the last part of the conversation. So go ahead.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, what I'm hearing is on the uh, expanding the liquor license, I'll make a motion based on the recommendations. Um, this is just the liquor to include the portion of the outside seating. That, that's my motion based on those recommendations. Make a motion to approve. He's uh, portside's already been doing this. This brings some in compliance because they've already, they were under uh, the COVID. Um, laws and that sunsetted, so this brings some, I don't think we have any issues there. I just uh, want to float that motion out there to my colleagues.
And I would just add to that, Tim, conditioned upon a dimensional map being filed with the clerk's office.
So moved.
I would say the southwest portion of the building with the dimension.
Okay.
And I'd like to just include a three month review on that, in that motion as well, if that's okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
This guy, Mr. Administrator?
Oh, you, you can't tie those dimensions into the H D C permit that's already on file?
No, this is for.
I tried.
That exists.
I tried. It seems to be a bit ambiguous, so the.
New dimensions by get, um, as determined by the town.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? So we had a motion in a second, as stated. Is there any other discussion on that part?
So I just want to be clear. So this is the liquor license expanding to the, what is now known as the outside, uh, it's a COVID um, patty, patty.
Fortunate name, but yes.
Yeah, okay.
With a, with a three month review.
The three month review.
Yep. And we're going to measure.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Okay. Or two, dancing and entertainment license. I'm not going through it all again.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a point of, is Warren still here with us? Warren Zahnhausen? Warren, may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Have you received any requests or permits uh, for a community picnic in the park?
I have not.
You have not?
I have not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And neither have we. Okay.
Counsel?
So.
What's in front of us?
If I just may continue on that one, okay? So I am very concerned about this because he's talking about doing a concert. Certainly there's not, I mean, I would.
No.
Ask the chief to weigh in on that, but I think this, this is a major concern. Um, have you even spoken with the police department about this? Yes. No, not the picnic, the concert. But you are bringing the crowd. You're bringing the music that brings the crowd.
Correct, but there's only going to be so many people allowed in, in my uh, in my areas. Twenty-nine on, on that patio back there. And you just told me I can't even use the uh, the, what you call it, the um. Can we call it the back patio? Could we go front patio, back patio rather than COVID patio?
Too late, we're committed.
You told me I can't even use the, the back patio, so I mean, I'm only going to have room for, you know, thirty, thirty people on that. I can handle that without the police. I, I'm not the one putting on the picnic in the park. It's, it's been advertised all over social media since the, the concert. It's got, got taken away, but I'm not the one doing it. I'm kind of ponying, I'm piggybacking on it. You know, I, I think it's going to be a great time.
I gotta tell you, Rich, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that response. I'll tell you why. This council took an immense amount of time talking about our portion of the concerts. The Fourth of July committee makes the ultimate decision on what happened there. That conversation heads, was. Deep, was long, and we talked very much about the safety there. That safety doesn't go away if the Fourth of July committee isn't doing the concerts. If somebody else is doing the concerts and the issues still arise, issues still arise. So I have a problem, and I also don't believe that you're not connected with it in the sense of, you're going to have a concert there. You're aware of this and you're playing to that. It's okay, but I don't think it's, is, I don't know. Uh, I'm, I'm drawing a blank on the word that I'd like to use, but I don't, I think it's a bit disingenuous to say that, that, that there's no correlation to.
No, but if, if you know that there's going to be an event and if you know there's going to be a bunch of people over there already. I'm, I'm just trying to get some attention. I mean, one, one of the things that, that the concerts always did for me that was amazing. Was it, it brought new people to my front door, people that never saw the restaurant before. You know, it was great advertising because almost every single person that went to that concert at least saw my restaurant. And I can't tell you how many people I would see throughout the course of the year to be like, oh yeah, I saw this place on, I, I came down for the concerts. I saw this, I always want to check it out. I'm here for lunch today. And there's no way for me to measure how much I'm going to lose, uh, how much of that I'm going to lose on top of those ten days that I'm losing too. So I just thought it was good advertisement for the place, put out some, put out some live music. I, I have, you know, the, the three respectful bands. It's not like I have like a Motley Crue or anything. Like I said, it's Andre Alston, it's Gary Faris, Dan Sin, they're, they're all very well respected people. Um, and they play like, you know, Billy Joel type, type, type music. It's nothing like offensive. It's not, it's not. Um, the type of music she was talking about earlier, the bum, bum, bum. And uh, you know, there's no profanity, nothing like that. It's, it's wholesome music and they're wholesome groups. So yeah, I was, I was taking advantage of, of the opportunity because, because of what we lost. I, I wouldn't be doing this obviously if, if the concert didn't get moved. I know that, that wasn't your decision, um, but I'm just trying to make up for what we're losing. So I don't, I, I apologize if I'm coming off as disingenuous, but I mean, I, you know, if you know there's going to be a bunch of people across the street bringing picnics, which they're, they're not buying anything for me anyways. I'm just trying to get, get some advertising and show people like, hey, look, this, this is a great place to come. You know what I mean? Maybe you come in. You know, maybe, maybe you even use my bathroom, which was always like a, a, a big thing on, on Third of July. You know what I mean? Everybody would come in, people wouldn't even purchase it and they would just use the bathroom. But I always looked at it like, at least they're looking at the building. They're going to come in, they're going to see the place. Maybe they see a menu while they're waiting, waiting to use the bathroom. Maybe they, they see a plate go by and that looks good and, you know, it's all tied together.
This council has taken a lot of time to, to, to discuss all this with, appreciate the input that came from. All the departments, the administrators, such and so forth. You can hear that we're trying to work with all of this. We've heard some serious concerns from. I, a resident that I believe represents more represent, uh, excuse me, residents, fifty-one, I believe was one there. We want to have you successful, but we also want to balance that with the neighborhood, the surrounding neighbors. I truly believe that you do too. I must tell you, I'm, as I said earlier, the decibel level would apply even if there's stuff happening across the street, right? So whatever's happening, that sixty decibels during the day applies even if there's people across the street. So that's, I, I guess it feels strange to me. I, I don't particularly have a problem with these three nights as long as it complies with all of our rules and regulations, including our noise ordinance. I'm happy for myself to give this a shot. I also concur with uh, Tim when he said a three month review. In, in regards to the uh, dancing and entertainment, I would like to. One at three months and then one at six months. The reason why I ask it that way is that the three month would be for the exterior and the. Or at least for my head, the, the exterior, and then three months after that would be the interior where we heard that there was concerns. Um, with the noise from the engine room. So I would be okay moving forward with those two reviews with uh, all three evenings. But you can hear our willingness to work with you, but I can't understate how concerned we are. That this doesn't turn into something that it shouldn't. And for the record, that beer garden, as it's listed in the pictures, is not part of this.
Yeah.
Just the patio on the outside and that patio, I think we, we won't go into all of that again. We know what we're saying there. Um, but just, I want, and I think my colleagues do, and I think your neighbors want you to be successful. I heard. Black Bean Burger a couple of times about going in there. That's important. We want you to do well. But it can't be at the cost of other things, so.
Mr. Chairman, just to clear, clarify, um, you said you wanted the three month review and the six month review, one for interior, one for exterior. Do we have to separate?
No, 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 no. I say that because there's the justification, but it would encompass everything entertaining. Yes. Counsel?
Now, uh, the reason why I ask Warren if the laws are put on this is because a community picnic. I'm sure it's not going to be a little table of six getting together with a little basket, you know? Uh, and that raises major concerns, you know, uh, these two pieces going together.
So what's this council's pleasure?
I was just wondering what a motion would look like.
So, so I, I, I have a question though.
Go ahead.
If you do approve the outside, because, because again, what I, what I was looking for was, you know, like a special permit for those three days. Would we still be, would we still have to stay at fifty decibels for, for those three days?
Yes. Yeah.
That's like, that's like a.
So to, for clarity, it's fifty decibels at what time, please?
It's at uh, nighttime, which we use uh.
Seven to nine, no, six to nine it says.
That's what I was looking for, yeah.
Six to nine?
No, no, no. The application is from six to nine, Mr. Administrator, but my question is, when does sixty decibels then become fifty decibels?
No, it's been a while since I ran it, but, but it used to be uh, sun, uh, nighttime. So the definition nighttime was sunset, I believe. Chief, chief, right? Daytime, nighttime. I gotta, I gotta review the code.
Oh, sunset would, would be to like, like eightish, almost at nine.
The solicitor is just getting clarity on that right now, so. While we wait for the response on that, what else did the council need clarity on?
Well, I just wanted to be clear. Once again, that. There's no way to separate these. I just want to make sure like Mike can weigh in when he's done looking up the information. Only because like I don't have a problem with the entertainment for like outside on the brunch time, for example. Or inside in the winter, you know, for that time. I don't really have a, a problem like in the back room, if you had a function back there and somebody brought, you know, like some music, whatever. But I do have a big problem with like DJ starting at ten blasting the music to have a dance party, so. I mean, and I don't think there's any way you can separate those. This is the same license. I just want Mike to weigh in to make sure that I'm correct in that because that will sway how I vote. That's all.
So, so the ordinance, uh, the ordinance references daytime. Um, and nighttime, but it doesn't set forth what constitutes day. And I think what the administrator was saying is we were using, you know, dusk and dawn probably as. Way to determine night and daytime. So um, and there are differences in the waterfront zone.
Yes, the waterfront zone has, has a higher decibel level.
Yeah.
This would be subject to the.
Zone um, is seventy D B A. So it's, it's, it's ten decibels.
Big difference.
Higher. Measured for, in a waterfront zone, so I'd be in front of, for instance, portside. But if behind it, it would be sixty during the day because it abuts a residential area.
So do we have clarity? So the.
It's clear, it's pretty.
No, 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 I'm sorry. So the time, the cutoff time is sixteen?
You know, I think the, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the um, what we've been using is. Dusk and dawn. I, I don't know what else.
That is the practice of the Bristol Police Department. And, and another tenant uh, of, of the ordinance is sounder noise projecting from one use district into another use district. With a different noise level limit shall not exceed the limits of each district into which the noise is projected. So you really have to use the two zones, you know, to, to balance it out. So it can't, it can't, because of the two districts are so close, it has to, you know, the, the noise.
So if I'm standing in the residential district.
That's right.
It must comply with that.
That's correct. That's my interpretation.
The more difficult one.
I would agree with that, absolutely.
Did that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think so. Um, so it would be seventy if, if you're, if it got approved.
So no, it would be sixty. So because you, you have to, because you abut a residential zone. And the uh, we'll call it the, the neighbor that's offended by the sound would be, you'd, you'd have to comply to sixty during the day. Fifty at night.
Sixty at her property.
But, but in front of me, I could, I could go up to seven.
That's correct.
Okay, then yeah, that's, that's what I, because we're.
So if you could do both, I'm, I'm impressed.
Well, we're going to point, we're going to point the speakers that way. So I mean, it should be louder in front of, in front of it than behind it. You know what I mean? Um.
Well, sometimes it depends on the wind, like living downtown, like I hear stuff from all over the place, living down here. Be, depends what, you know, it can be from Linden Place, it can be pivotal, it could be wherever. Depends on which direction the wind is blowing, literally, you know, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, trust me, there's, there's been, there's been plenty of outdoor music that I can hear from my house. That's not even downtown. You know what I mean? That, that porch vest I can hear from my house. You know what I mean? Like it's. You know, so that's what I was looking for was something kind of like that, like just a special permit to be able to go a little bit louder. If that's, if that's going to be the limit, you know, I'll test it and it might not even be worth doing, you know what I mean? Because I wasn't expecting it. I was, I was expecting to get a little bit more lenient because it's a special event. It's right in front of the holiday. I'm applying for it. I'm asking, I'm not, you know, I'm not doing it without your permission, you know what I mean?
So for clarity, so if this council does approve what we've discussed, it would comply with all no, all the order. All of our ordinance, including the noise ordinance. And in this instance, it would be uh, as it, as it uh, points towards the residential area. It would be sixty during the day, fifty at night.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Again, I'd have to, I'd have to see what that actually is. E- even if you do approve it, I'd have to see if that, what that actually is. On my own, which I can do. I have a decimal reader and everything. Because I'm, you know, you may approve it and I may decide it's just not worth, you know, having it out there.
Understand.
Can I just go back to Mike? Oh, wait a minute, no. He still is checking some.
Oh, no, no, I was just, you know, I, I just wanted to confirm for myself that um. The, the decibel limits are for residential. Um, and then there's one for business limited in general, which is sixty-five. And then there's the one for the waterfront, which is the seventy. So there are actually three different daytime levels depending on who's on your. But those are the numbers in your ordinance. Just hard to read them on a.
I know. So Mike, my question while you were checking out the levels was, I, I think I know the answer.
Sure.
But um, I just want to double check. There's no way to. Like, you know, I said, I like the brunch is fine with me to have like a Sunday brunch ten, you know, eleven to two. But that entertainment license is going to be the same. I mean, they can do anything with it, correct? Well, we can put that restriction, but I mean, like for the back room. It's, you know, they, like, how do we prevent having like a really loud?
The, the only way you prevent that is a complaint comes into the police department and they go there with the.
Oh, yeah.
Because the courts require objective measurements, not subjective. And as was explained by the chief, the first thing that would happen is they would measure the ambient sound in the neighborhood before any music was played. And then the decibel limits would be added to that. So, but there is no other way to enforce it. Um, no one can just walk in and say, it just sounds too loud. We need to have reading. So we'll have to rely on neighbors, which I'm sure won't be a problem, say. I, I will tell you this, I, I think it's just practical about it. If, if someone can't go to sleep at night because the base is booming and booming, that's a problem.
Right.
So when the noise meter comes, though, right?
Well, I think that that's a thing that in the um, letter. And in some of the text messages that were shared, it was like, well, I'm not breaking any rules. That is some of the comments attributed to you. And I think that is, that may be technically true, but it doesn't mean it's not annoying if it's like booming in that. In rattling your, your building, you know, your windows.
Like I said before, we did cancel the DJ after, after that. And um, you know, again, I, I, I don't know how much of the text message we mean or you're, 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 you're being shown.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think um, we've, we've talked about this. I'm, I'm going to try to float a uh, motion out here. And then colleagues, I want you to uh, chime in and amend it. Uh, but I think we should move forward with the entertainment and uh, entertainment license. Um, for the outside patio, um, there would be a conditional approval that they would use. Um, minimal amplified music and they would conclude that music at nine o'clock. And they would not exceed the district decimal, des- um, decibel levels, sorry, not decimal, decibel levels. Uh, for the outside. Um, and there, so for the outdoor, the time would end at nine o'clock. And then uh, for the engine room, um, they would still, they would go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, ten P M. Uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, ten P M, Friday, Saturday, twelve A M. And Sunday to two P M. For the engine room, but the beer garden is not included in my motion at all. And um.
Tim, may I ask?
Sure.
So you said nine o'clock outside. May I ask that that is specifically for the dates of six twenty-six, six twenty-seven and six twenty-eight? Um, and I'm looking for it. Here's right here. Uh, that was six to nine for those three dates. Other than that, it's eleven to two on Sunday is what was requested.
Right.
So those three days specifically called out.
Alright, thank you. Yep. Okay. No, thank you for clarifying. Yep, exactly.
Then I'll second that. Discussion.
Did you put?
Oh, three month, three month.
Put a time limit on that, Tim? A review?
Oh, uh, sorry. So we would have a three month review and then if there, we would revisit this. And then we would have a second uh, review in another three month time. So there would be two, two, three months reviews.
And obviously, that's not going to impact those three special. And obviously, that's not gonna impact those three special days, it will impact the engine room and the outside patio-
Correct.
In terms of reviews.
Correct.
Well, the outside patio, oh, the-
May I stop for a moment, so that was an amended motion, is there a second? And you seconded that, go ahead, discussion.
Uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, interesting enough, if, had we not brought this up, this would have slipped right on the, on the, the normal, you know, uh, agreement, there were things, so I'm glad that we did surface and we've had this discussion.
No, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I do want to, um, just summarize my kind of feelings on this and everything, I'll try to be quick, but, uh, you know, I, I've been to Portside, and I love what you've done to that area, Richie and, and Caroline, I bring my son there after Little League games and, and things like that, and my wife and I have been to the engine room before, uh, we've been out of there by about nine o'clock, though, so, um, but I think it's, it is a real asset to the community, and I want to thank you guys, what you did, and, uh, on the, on the same hand, I, I know how difficult it can, can be, and how annoying some of that noise can be, and as a father, I can tell you that at midnight, if there's noise like that, it's gonna cause a lot of, uh, fuss in, in the house, so, um, but with that being said, I, um, I'm glad to see here that we've concluded that some more enforcement, uh, could be, uh, is needed here, and that there's some more oversight by the council with the, um, three to, three-month reviews that we have in place, so.
Okay. Any other discussion from the council?
Yes, just really briefly, I, I know we're trying to dismiss the fact that you can't control who, how many people will come and all of that, but we'll bore some responsibility on this.
On what, on what?
Uh, on the number of people that may come, and there may, and how many people are you gonna have in your facility within your premises?
Okay.
And, okay, but obviously, you will be contributing to the, uh, to the other side, which has not been approved.
Any other discussion from the council? Mr. Administrator?
I just followed it, the, uh, section one dash two in the-
That was, like, just in time, sir, so, nice job.
Nighttime, uh, daytime is the period between sunrise and sunset, and nighttime is the period between sunset and sunrise, unless otherwise defined.
We are going to look at how these things, how applications come to this council, and we'll make some changes. I think we'll also adjust the, uh, that to have a specific time, uh, possibly, so, seems a bit vague on it, but, so-
Probably because of daylight savings time.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so like, the summer, I think the sun goes down around fourth of July, it's gonna be like-
Eight thirty-nine.
Eight, eight, late, it's gonna be late, you know, official sunset probably eight thirty or eight fifteen, you know, still be light out till after nine.
Any other discussion from the council? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna vote no, because it's just very confusing, not confusing, but it's, I'm, I'm disturbed by what has happened in the neighborhood a little bit, because I live in this neighborhood as well, not your neighborhood, but this neighborhood, and sometimes I feel that because we're in a, a business and a mixed zone, people don't always take the neighborhood part seriously, and, you know, I, I know the noise levels can be for a lot of different reasons, so, at this point, I'm just gonna vote no on the entertainment part of it, so.
And, and I just need to clarify, when I, when I look at that, well, I don't even Facebook very rarely, however, some folks monitor it for me, and when they bring items like this to my attention, it concerns me when this is out there before the council even has any say on the matter.
Well, on the post, I actually wrote that it hasn't been approved yet, but it's looking good, because when I came here, it, it seemed like I was just coming as a formality, like, it was just an expansion, it wasn't a big deal, a lot of other places have it, um, so if you read, uh, you said you're not on it, but if you read the post, I made it very clear, where, and I put today's date on it and everything, like, still have to wait for approval, but it's looking good, I think are the exact words I, I used.
I think, I think the thing, Richie, is this, like, on this concert, like, you know, basically, it's very similar to what you would do at brunch, right, the same, similar people, some cases, the same people, and if you're gonna be playing to the, I know you wanna get people who are across the street-
Yeah.
Uh, to come, but I mean, you're only gonna be able to have the people on that patio.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, in some ways, it's not that different, now, but what is gonna happen if somebody says, oh, they's gonna be having this, let me bring my chairs, you know, and sit on, like, not gonna be able to sit on Thame Street, you know what I mean, so somebody's gonna have to monitor that, so I think the, the concern, like, I don't see just the way you do your regular restaurant in that patio, I don't really see a big issue with this, the big issue's gonna be if people say, oh, there's a way to have this concert, but you're not gonna be able to project it loud enough all the way across into the park, you know?
I gotta, I, I, I'm not, I'm sorry.
And they, and, no, I was gonna say, and like, you know, and then there's, like, yet another place, and it's, it's less about this and more about the picnic itself, I think, like, if there's a lot of people, then what happens with, you know, uh, law, law enforcement to be down there to monitor it, you know what I mean?
Again, the picnic's been advertised way before that I, I, I put my advertisement out, I was just piggybacking on something that was already going, I would have prob- I probably wouldn't have gotten this idea if the picnic wasn't going on, and the picnic doesn't really benefit me much, because everybody's bringing their own, their own food and drinks, you know what I mean, it's not-
No, I mean, I don't know much, like, the picnic, I saw that being discussed as an idea back with the concert issue, but I hadn't really seen this thing until it was brought here tonight, you know what I mean?
Again, just to be clear, that's not, I, I didn't put that together.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting it is, I'm just saying, like, you know, like, I think in your case, you, you're gonna be mostly playing to the people that are at your restaurant on the outside, you know, the front of your outside and the, um, and the side, so.
Yeah, yeah, again, it's just, just get a little attention, it's advertising, it, it, it makes the place look good, people have a good time, they remember it, that place that had the band while we were having the picnic, you know?
So you have an approval, I would ask, I hope that you, you heard the vote, so, um, it's three to two, I'm voting for it, but I'm, I, I want to be really clear with you, I, you're in front of us in three months, and then you're gonna be in front of us again at six months. It is my hope that there is no issues with the neighbors, I don't want to find an issue with the neighbors. So I really hope that in three months, it's a, it's a positive next step, so, we're hoping.
May I just make one quick suggestion, I'm not gonna ask you this question, because I might say it's out of order, because it's not on the agenda. My suggestion is, since you own another restaurant in Bristol, you better make sure that you have your, like, license to serve outside, because you said you weren't aware that you had to have that for your patio, so you don't have to discuss it, I just want-
We have, we have that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Well, because that, that's kind of like, like, that was the situation when I bought it, you had to apply for that, you know what I mean, this, this was something different, and again, we're not, we serve food out there, so I know all that, you know, my, my impression with what we're calling the beer garden, um, was, we're not-
Not the beer garden, I'm talking about your side patio.
Okay, yeah.
No beer garden exists right now in our world.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I thought you were talking about that, though, and, and, yeah, with the other one, I didn't know the rules had changed in February that it didn't include that anymore. I apologize for that, um, but the, uh, Roberto's, that's always been how that is there, so, like, I, I can do the same thing over and over every year, that's easy, it's when things get changed, you know, it gets a little tricky.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D three, this is Karen Binder, the executive director for Blithewell Inc., one hun- one oh one Ferry Road, and this is a request for the dancing and entertainment license.
Hello.
Good evening, members of the town council, yes, uh, Blithewell is applying for a dancing and entertainment license for our weddings and our music at sunset series in the summer, uh, my only question was regarding our exemption from the noise ordinance because we're in the historic preservation zone, uh, uh, conservation zone that we obtained when we were having issues with our neighbors on Van Winkle, and how that corresponds to the entertainment license times. I think I sent Ms. Cordero an email about that.
So there was a letter sent, and I have the letter on my desk, and I can get it, that, if you can give me one second, it explains the historic preservation zones, because there is a different noise ordinance that was in place, I believe, in two thousand and eleven-
Yes.
Pertaining to those four specific HPCs.
C, C, HPC conservation zones, right?
Zones, yeah. That one I do not remember off the top of my head, so.
So while the clerk grabs that, what's in front of this council is a request, um, nothing on Monday or Tuesday, Wednesday, five PM, nine to nine PM, excuse me, nothing on Thursday, and Fridays, five to eleven, Saturday, five to eleven, Sunday, four to ten forty-five, and there's a quote that I can't quite, does that say holiday?
It's for Sundays until ten forty-five on holiday weekends, and that was the exception to the noise ordinance that we received.
Which, okay, and then Sunday, typically, you handwrote in Sunday again, saying four to ten.
Correct.
So the exception was that ten forty-five?
And that's the way we've been operating for two decades.
That was quick.
I had it there anyway. So there's the, in section ten thirty-five nine, there's, in the entertainment HPC zones, there's, um, a limit on weekdays in that zone until ten PM, and then there's a limit on Fridays and Saturdays, and the day before, any legal holidays, that they're allowed to um, extend until eleven PM, they would have to cease by eleven PM.
Right.
So that's what I have, whether-
Does it speak to the decibel level, just for, since we had so much conversation?
That I, that's in the noise ordinance, yeah, that's-
Following the noise ordinance all the way.
Specified in the noise ordinance, yeah.
Yes, everyone does.
Yeah.
Okay.
I made, based on the recommendations, I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is D four, this is Cara Macy, executive director for Linden Place, five hundred Hope Street, and this is also the request for the dancing and entertainment license.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, um, Linden Place is applying for a dancing entertainment license similar to Blithewell to continue our weddings and our concert series.
So in front of this council, it's nothing on Monday, everything else is ten AM, ten PM, is that correct?
And that's the absolute largest, you know, sometimes we have a memorial service, um, after event or something like that.
So this encompasses all of that?
Correct.
Probably not gonna go that-
It is, it is probably, it would, I can't think of a single day that it has gone ten to ten, that's the extreme outside limits, and it's never every day.
So, Mr. Chairman, based on the recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I like that, Madam Clerk.
The next item is D five, this is Brenda Tocchetta, from the executive director from Mount Hope Farm, two fifty Madicom Avenue, and this is also for the dancing and entertainment license.
Based on the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the next item is D six, this is Victoria Drew, from the Harrisoff Marine Museum, one Burnside Street, and this is for the dancing and entertainment license as well.
Good evening.
Hello.
Applying for the dancing and entertainment license for our weddings and concert series.
As stated in the application here, so, okay, council?
Uh, based on the recommendations, I make a motion, do we approve it?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion?
Yes, we need the place for the balls, so.
No rain tomorrow.
I never thought of it that way, isn't that interesting, okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the, on the agenda is D seven, this is the Bristol Police Department, and this is in regards to the mobile food truck event, permit for the fourth annual community night out event at the Town Common on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, from five thirty to eight thirty PM, there's also a C, D, eight, and F one item.
Captain, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I just want to, to note-
I'll be quick and swift.
I want to note for the record that we get recommendations for, uh, agenda items, and this is a police department request, we got a recommendation from the police department that we should approve it, so, I just, I think that's wonderful, so, but, floor is yours, go ahead.
So, uh, our fourth annual community night out is scheduled for August eighth, thirteenth, at twenty twenty-five, we're going to have, um, it's a family fun event, uh, fostering a positive relationship between, um, the community and law enforcement, um, promoting, uh, community safety engagement. Um, I'm also in looking for, um, a one-day dancing entertainment, as we will have a DJ on the common that day, and I'm also requesting, um, if the council would, um, provide, um, some funds as they have done in the past to us.
Can I add, can I get a motion from the council to combine D seven, D eight, and F one?
Second.
Motion made by Aaron, seconded by Tim, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that just, this will encompass all of that, so that makes it easier to do that.
So am I good to go? I'm ready to, like, run out the door. First time, actually, it's my first time in front of you, also.
Okay, all right, all right, so what's the council's pleasure on the mobile truck event?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, discussion?
Include the, uh, contribution to assist-
No, we'll get to those separately, that's why.
I wanted to do that.
Gotta wait, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, okay, the next one?
Is D eight, the Bristol Police Department, this is the request for the one-day dancing and entertainment license for the fourth annual community night out event at the Town Common, August thirteenth, from five thirty to eight thirty.
Council?
Based on the recommendations, I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion?
Should we read the police recommendation?
Yes, we should, I love it, please say yes to the, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, lastly?
Is F one, this is the Bristol Police Department, this is a request for council contribution to the fourth annual community night out event for August thirteenth.
I make a motion that we contribute fifteen hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion?
Does that match last year's?
Last year was twelve hundred.
Of course, you did fifteen hundred.
I was right on that.
Hey, it did, yeah.
Sincerely appreciated.
And that's also contingency, right?
So that motion is, that money would come out of council contingency? Yes, it would come out of council contingency.
Yes, it would.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now you're all set.
Fantastic, thank you all very much.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D nine, this is Amer Suite and Treats LLC, and this is Eunice Kim, two fifty-nine Thame Street, and this is a request for a vitrine license.
Is Eunice here? Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Eunice Kim, um, I'm just here trying to apply for a vitrine license.
So where, so two fifty-nine is, um-
So it's in the, um, Bristol Harbor Inn, we're actually, um, invited by the owners of the hotel to offer a dessert option, um, in that space down where the old Grey's Ice Cream was.
Where Grey's used to be, okay.
Yes.
Tell, I just did it, didn't I, is that why you're laughing? I just, I, I did what a Rhode Islander does, where something used to be, so, so tell us a little bit about what the business is.
Okay, um, so it is going to be soft-serve, there's no soft-serve in town, um, in addition to other suites such as, um, New England style, a New Zealand-style ice-pressed ice cream, which is a form of soft-serve with real fruit, um, we'll also be doing specialty sundaes, um, popsicles, um, waffles, which are crisp-pressed waffles with customized toppings, uh, smoothies, and Italian ice, things of that nature, have a little varieties for something for everyone.
Feel free to bring over the second-
Just gonna say, yeah.
Welcome, please come visit.
Absolutely, okay.
Based on the recommendations, make a motion to approve, and welcome, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wait.
We've been looking for you. Lots of luck.
Oh, one more, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda is D ten, this is Amer Suites and Treats LLC, and Eunice Kim, two fifty-nine Thame Street, and this is for the holiday sales license.
Based on the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, discussion? When are you opening?
Hopefully by the third.
No.
Yes, we know that's a special time, uh, with the fireworks, um, I actually have, you know, been in, um, the community for a long time, and we want to continue offering, like, dessert options here.
Outstanding, outstanding.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
Happy to see you.
Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D eleven, this is Robert McNeil Design Collaborative, doing business as the Northeast Golf Company, Bristol Golf Park, ninety-six Broad Common Road, and this is a request for a one-day dancing and entertainment license for June twentieth, twenty twenty-five, from seven PM to ten PM for the summer solstice golfing event.
Hi, Robert.
How are you? Evening. Fantastic, how are you?
We've never had this many dancing and entertainment licenses. We've never had this many dancing and entertainment licenses. Impressive.
Yeah.
Tell us a little about what's going on.
We're gonna have the Rolling Stones come.
Decibels, we hear decibels.
We do an annual event on the longest day of the year, which is June twentieth, first day of summer. And it's an evening event. It usually starts around four or five o'clock in the afternoon and goes into the evening. We have a couple of holes that are lit up so people can play at night. And we have a couple of competitions on halls at night. We have a D J from seven to ten. So that's our, that's our entertainment for the evening.
Counsel?
Based on positive recommendations, make a motion to approve. And also, we're very happy to see that it's been a great report coming in from the police and everything. You guys.
It's been awesome.
Second.
Good, good.
Good to hear. Motion made by Tim seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D twelve, and that is the Two Beagance Production LLC, thirty-three Broad Street, Providence. And this is a request for the use of the Town Common and one day dancing and entertainment licenses from July thirty-first to August fifth. And this is a cleanup and breakdown schedule of August sixth and seventh for film production.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. My name's Alex. I'm the location manager on the film. This here's Luke, the production manager. The meeting's been very informative so far about decibels and what what qualifies as night because.
Are you scared?
Yeah. It's been a little intimidating because what we're asking for is a bit unusual. But to put it, you know, to try to explain it, we're basically putting together a mock music festival. So we're not actually, in a way, we're not performing or having any real dances. It's all staged for camera is is the idea. And because of the scene itself, all takes place at night. We want to film throughout the night on these two nights. There's been a few updates since what I've submitted for the original petition because today was actually day one of filming for us. You may have seen some of them, some of us loading onto the ferry today. We did some filming on the Prudence Island ferry.
Alex, could you just take just a second and tell everybody, like, you say filming, we have some information, but I don't know if everybody does. What are you actually doing?
Okay, so we're filming a movie called Remain. It is an M. Night Shyamalan production, so some of you might recognize him. He's been making movies for many, many years, movies like The Sixth Sense and Signs and Unbreakable. He's got quite a, quite a resume.
He does.
Yeah, and we're, so we're filming throughout the state of Rhode Island. We actually, again, today was our first day of filming. You guys are day like thirty-four and thirty-five, so it's, there's a lot that needs to happen between now and then. And we're filming in, I think, fifteen, sixteen different towns between now and then. So we've had a lot on our plate. But we wanted to at least get this conversation started with you all because we, we, we came. Knight, our director, very much loves the Town Common and the look of the Town Common and would very much like to include it in the film. So it's just a matter of, you know, how do we get there without, you know, was staying in the, you know, the regulations and the the decibel levels and keeping the neighborhood happy. What I can say about the, the, so we're not, again, we're not having real performers. The way the the concert itself will take place is there'll be fake musicians, or maybe there'll be real musicians. I don't know, but they won't be playing actual instruments. We, it's what we call playback. The music will be played through a speaker. So, I mean, we can control the level of the noise. And it's essentially just to give, provide tempo for the fake crowd that will be dancing to the music. And this is not something that will go throughout that entire filming time. It's it's for when we're taking, you know, when we're shooting specific shots. We have a lot of scenes that are just dialogue and things that are happening behind stage and other parts of the. I think I, we, we sent a sort of diagram of what we're looking to do within Town Common. So it's placing, we're bringing in a stage. Apparently, it's the same stage you all use for your concerts because the vendor has been here before and is familiar. So it's, you know, kind of a mobile stage that wheels in and we place that in the park along with tents and all the dressings of a music festival essentially to to provide the look of a music festival. And then we would bring in extras who would be the part, the festival goers. The plan for that right now, and this has developed since I, you know, submitted our petition. But we've, we're talking with Roger Williams University to park pretty much all of our stuff. The extras, our crew, all the big trucks and trailers would be out at Roger Williams University. And then we would just kind of shuttle in our crew and twelve passenger vans. The, the extras would come in on a bus being brought to site. We are, and then, you know, they would be staged and, you know, it's a, it's a very controlled thing. It's obviously where everything's being, you know, directed and then put on camera. So it's not, in a way, it's not, you know, an actual music festival. I just.
One sec.
Yeah.
Mr. Solicitor?
Now, just for your benefit, I want you to know that Steve was just showing me. The ordinance does provide for temporary exemption from the decibel readings upon good cause shown. And the Director of Public Safety or Steve is the one who would make that determination. So my point is, if you want to grant this, you can with the proviso that they can work with the town administrator relative to the decibel levels. Because if they can show good cause, he has the ability to grant a reasonable, it says, waiver.
So what's in front of the council is a request for July thirty-first through August seventh for Tom Town Common, as you've already expressed some of that. Does the council have any concern about giving the administrator, so allowing this flexibility, if you will?
No, I don't. I just wanted to know, are you aware that the details to provide a fire and E M S details needs to be coordinated?
Uh, yes.
Okay, just wanted to.
Yeah.
Are the motion?
Yeah.
Just a heads up. Okay.
We can all go to Tim's house and watch this be done. I know, but I got a building in front of me.
He's got the columns right at the corner, right, just straight from the comments.
I'm just gonna say, do you need an extra?
If you see a guy in one of the, of the Wally School staring out like that, it could be me. I don't know.
Two of us live right on the perimeter. I'm on.
Mary, you and I could be, we'd make some good extras.
All, all joking aside, obviously, you're gonna, if, if the council approves that the administrator would, would follow through. I understand that there's, there was a talk about fireworks and things like that.
Yeah, so that's another sort of, let's call it creative development that has happened in the last few days. But I was kind of told by, so Ocean State Pyrotechnics is who we work with for this stuff. They're not so much fireworks as they are sort of stage effects. They're the ones you sort of use for like indoor content. It's mostly just light, no sound.
Okay.
And it's just that be, those would happen, I think, maybe two or three times for filming. It would be, you know, thirty second shot would happen all within the course of an hour.
I bring that up just because you, you were part of, well, you were hearing the conversation that we had earlier about respecting the neighborhood and all of that. We work closely with the administrator and we trust that he would work with you. And you, of course, would then follow and make sure that, you know, the people around there do need to go to work the next day. So we want to be cognizant of that. That's not taking down the fact that this sounds really cool and it's, it'll be fun to have Bristol in a film. So we've been in other films, but additional to that, it sounds wonderful.
Yeah, it sounds really exciting, guys.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve based on the recommendations and we'll add in, you'll work with the town administrator on an acceptable decimal level. Is that right?
No.
Second.
Waiver, right?
So.
Yeah, a waiver. A waiver.
Motion made by Tim as stated, seconded by Tony. Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
If I may, just very briefly, you know, and I know there's recommendations from the chief, the two chiefs, the fire chief and police chiefs. Obviously, you know, all of that is being coordinated with them, you know, I'm sure.
Good. And the administrator will be directly involved.
Right.
Exactly. Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is E one. This is the dancing and entertainment renewals for twenty-five twenty-six.
Doesn't stop, does it?
And there is a, I'm sorry, a received at meeting on the council dais for a late petition that came in today for the lobster pot.
Yes, this one's here.
Okay, so. Beautiful.
The lobster pot will have to file a, an application for the next council meeting to include the outdoor portion of their patio because that was not previously approved and they are requesting outdoor entertainment. So because the application was received late, it wasn't enough time to get any type of recommendation for that. So we'll have to push that portion of it to the July meeting.
So what's in front of this council for the lobster pot is just indoor as stated on the application? Okay. Counsel?
I make a motion we approve. However, I was looking for, there was a recommendation from the police department requesting, I believe, some, a couple of warning letters to go out to those establishments. Am I correct or not? Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh.
After reviewing all calls, I recommend that both agents in the Wolf Tavern be formally notified of the noise complaints. So yes, there are two agents in the Wolf. Aside from those, all others are good.
Yeah.
Well, second the motion.
Motion made by Tony seconded by Tim as stated. Chief, any input on that?
My office or the clerk could attach that, you know, to the license that there was, you know, a complaint made in reference to noise.
Please.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E two, and this is the public laundry license renewals for twenty-five twenty-six.
Never been so happy to talk about.
Wow. Based on the recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim seconded by Tony as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E three. This is Robert McNeil, McNeil Design Collaborative, doing business as the Northeast Golf Company, the Bristol Golf Park, ninety-six Broad Common Road. And this is a review of the Class C Licorall License.
Like, again, excellent report, no issues, which we'd love to see. Based on the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim seconded by Tony as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck with your event.
Thank you.
Yes. You too.
You too. Take care.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F two. This is Blythwald Museum, Aberitum and Gardens, one oh one Ferry Road. This is a request for council consideration in support of a resolution seeking exemption of its building intangible property, personal property from local property taxation.
Hi again. Yes, so prior to twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, right around there, Blythwald's tax exempt status was under the previous owners, which was Heritage Trust Preserve Rhode Island. And once we sought our ownership of ourself for Blythwald Incorporated, I had met with the tax assessor at the time to ask for our rental properties, the properties that we were renting to private citizens, that we understood that those would be taxed. The property would be taxed, but everything else would be not taxed. And that's the way it has been since that time. And then when we took over use of the cottage that's closest to the greenhouses, I asked Ms. Cordero for us to be taken off the tax roll for that building because we wanted to be treated like the other nonprofits in town, that if buildings are used for the mission of the organization, they're not taxed. And that brought about the whole issue of Blythwald not having its own exemption. So Diane and Ms. Cordero notified me that that actually has to be done at the state, but I'm seeking a resolution for it to be approved here to bring to the state.
Talk to this council about the rental properties. You're not looking for, give me, give us some authority.
So we had, yeah, so we had three private rentals that we're renting to private residents as private residences. We are keeping two of those as rental properties and we pay property tax on those and would continue to pay property tax on those. The third, the cottage by the greenhouses, we've taken that over for offices for our horticultural staff. And I believe the tax assessor came by and took a look and saw that those are being used as offices. So it's my understanding that for any buildings that are used for the mission of the organization, that those not be taxed. So that's how it all came about.
So you're in front of us asking for a resolution so it can take the next step, if you will, go to our legislatures.
To get overall tax exempt status, right, for the properties that are supporting our mission.
Fair enough. So it would not include two, it sounds like.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Counsel?
I, I don't have a, a problem with it. So, but are you, have you already talked to the legislature? Are you trying to get this done this session, like in the next few days or?
Well, I know it's late at night and apparently our attorney needs it by tomorrow. So if it can happen, that's great. If it can't, we'll just wait. But yes, we have Susan Donovan prepared to help us submit it. Yes.
I would move that we support the resolution in laying out the property, the portion of the property that needs to be exemption, the tax exemption.
Yes, thank you.
Is there, is there a, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion made by Mary seconded by Tony as stated. Discussion?
Yes, but I concur with what Mary said. We need to clarify what is to be exempt and what is not. Okay, I think it's important that's clear.
Yeah.
I believe the legislation does that.
Yeah.
It's already drafted, is what you're saying. Okay, that's kind of what I was asking.
I don't see a resolution in the packet. Was there one included?
I did not have a resolution. So I think the request was for a resolution to be approved for that tax exemption, but I did not receive one. I don't know if it was intended that the town write up a resolution, but generally, we don't do that.
Okay.
But you can still, you can still have a motion of support of a resolution.
To support the legislation. Do we know the number of the legislation?
That, that I think we have actually is connected with the. If I, if I'm.
Oh, here it is right here. Yep. Right, 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 right.
It's S three zero four one substitute A. If I'm not mistaken, the one that, the legislation that you submitted?
Yes.
Oh, that's two thousand six, but that's been changed.
No.
No?
So now I wish my attorney was here.
Actually, that's from Harrisoff.
So if we can't do that tonight, that's fine.
Okay.
If we want, if we want, if it would be best for us to submit it to you for approval, we can take that next step. And if we miss this legislative session, you know, that's fine. They might extend it anyway because of their business that they have going on.
But I think, I think it's, I mean.
It's, it's all.
Basically going to be similar to what's here. Am I correct?
Yes.
And somebody's already drafted legislation, like Sue Donovan or somebody, they've already drafted it.
Yes.
So we could just probably get the number and, I mean, is, you basically just need to know that the council met on such and such a night.
Correct.
And approved, you know, this going forward.
Correct.
And so that could be short and sweet and, you know, if Melissa was able to get that legislative, that bill number.
Okay.
Then like tomorrow could probably go there. Like, I don't know if they're gonna try to get out Friday. I don't really know. I'm not following that.
Tomorrow's the nineteenth, right?
Tomorrow's the holiday. That's right. Yeah, yeah. So I don't think they'll try to get out Friday.
I can reach out to Sue Donovan to get a copy of the okay, legislation that is there. If you want to email it to me, we can review it.
Okay.
And then I'll review with the solicitor.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
I'll be available.
I don't know what's the good part. We're all available tomorrow.
Okay.
But I'm not trying to put Melissa to work tomorrow. I'm just, I just met, I met Friday.
So we had a motion and a second to, uh, support a resolution or uh, that included the, uh, supporting non-tax status excluding those two properties that have already been talked about.
Yep.
Any other discussions?
So the recommendation from the town administrator was to recommend to continue to assess tax.
Which is on those two properties that, that those two.
Oh, the two properties. Okay. When I read that before, I was like, oh, okay, that.
I support the resolution to continue to make, to, uh, assess no taxes, the tax, uh, tax exemption status.
Okay.
With the exception of the two.
Okay.
Right.
So I concur with the tax assessor in that recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm in support of the resolution.
I, I misread it because I saw the recommendation from him and then I saw Diane's and I'm, I read them wrong. I saw two conflicting recommendations the way that I read them. So, but, yeah. Cool.
Any other discussion?
I think all the information is there to get it done quickly.
They're using it for offices.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F3. This is Daniel Manchester for the Bristol Historical Preservation Society, and this is the request of the use of the town common for the annual flea and fair for August ninth, twenty twenty-five from nine AM to four PM. The date of August tenth.
Based on the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony and Mary. Any discussion?
You just have to note for the record, there is a, a recommendation from the director of Parks and Rec that was a received at meeting item for this. I just.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll include and follow those recommendations? Yes. Everybody okay with that?
Certainly.
Correct, yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G1. This is the Bristol two hundred and fiftieth commission. This is council confirmation for the town administrator's appointee for one unexpired four-year term set to expire January twenty twenty-seven. And we have Louis Cirillo with a resignation and Matthew Hayes with a town administrator's appointee.
I make a motion to accept Louis's resignation with a letter, thanks for his service thus far and, um, uh, point net Hayes. Well, we don't need to. We just need to concur. Just ratify that. That's fine.
So is it, yeah, so are we ratifying it? Are we just like advising, like, not that, uh, just sort of receive and file because you're just telling us?
No, we.
It's not.
We have to prove it. Okay.
Confirm or ratify.
Okay.
I like.
I'll second it.
Let's ratify.
All right. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is I1, and this is Sarah Turgan, district manager of the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District. This is a request for council consideration and adoption of resolution in support of the twenty twenty-five composting and organic waste diversion act for House Bill five one nine five and Senate Bill one zero one zero four.
And colleagues, I had spoken to Sarah Turgan. We, we're going to wait on this, so I'm asking for a motion to receive and file. Or I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is I2. This is Parks and Recreation Director Resenhousen. This is a request for council consideration to require special event certificates of insurance for all athletic tournaments and one-day events held on town facilities.
So I reached out to, uh, Warren after our last meeting and asked if he could take a look at this and also worked with the administrator. Warren, I know you did a lot of work on this and you worked with the solicitor too, so please.
I did. So, um, it, it, when I went and looked, I apologize, I'm losing my voice here, but, um, the only thing we really had for policies was for athletic leagues. Little league, you know, it used to be popular football and all the rest of Warren and such. So we did modify it. That's why I wrote it the way it was. So for the other leagues who may pop up, like the girls softball league and stuff, it wasn't originally in that, uh, it would be a different policy for the season. Those usually come from the national organization. And then for any one-day events, that's called a special event policy, as well as other activities that may happen, uh, at any of the parks. Um, and with the solicitor's office, um, we came up with a one million dollar per occurrence, two million aggregate. Uh, and he also provided me with a form, uh, actually Peter did, uh, with a form to, uh, to use to submit to those people looking for those events. Now, the reason I put at the discretion of the director, if we were to have somebody wanted to have a birthday party there, you know, three-year-old birthday party on the pavilion or something, that's probably something we wouldn't look to, um, require.
I love the reasonableness in that. The idea behind this was to, to make sure that we're protecting the town and the townspeople. Right? If something happens, but we also didn't make, need to make it so it was unattainable for a small event like that.
Exactly. So, so I want to leave that discretion part in there.
Are, are we, may I, please? Yes. Uh, are we going through the, the inter-local, uh, trust?
I was, I was told, I think, Mike, you told me, right, that the, the, there's already sort of a, an agreement with the trust that if if somebody needed something that we could send them their way, uh, and they have something in place to help.
Yeah, there's, there's a website that they can refer organizations to that provide these certificates for minimal amounts of money.
So Mike, would you say the motion, if this council agrees that we, uh, support this, uh, policy change?
Yeah, I, I would actually make the motion to approve it.
Perfect.
Yeah.
That's what I said. Some moved.
Second.
Hey, I guess you didn't say it at all. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I3, and this is tax assessor Leeman, and this is in regard to the resolution for the town of Bristol authorizing the assessment evaluations and levy of taxes, sewer service fees and sewer assessments.
Motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is I4. This is the executive director Laurie, Laurie Karen Silvera from the Rhode Island Bridge and Turnpike Authority, and this is in regard to the Mount Hope Bridge maintenance plan update.
Laurie, you've been very patient. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight. Again, I'm Laurie Karen Silvera. I'm the executive director at the Rhode Island Turnpike and Bridge Authority. With me is Eric Seaberry. He's the director of engineering at the Turnpike and Bridge Authority. We've been before you before, but it's been a few years. We get many questions from the public about the work that we do. As you know, the Turnpike and Bridge Authority is a quasi-public entity. We have, uh, a responsibility for maintenance of the Claiborne Pell Bridge in Newport, between Newport and Jamestown. We have also the Mount Hope Bridge. Uh, we have the Jamestown Verazano Bridge and also the Secana River Bridge. In addition to that, we have ten small bridges and we have all the roads that connect all of that infrastructure. So that, that is our responsibility. With that as the background, we did want to come before you and just, uh, give you an update as one of our host communities. It's important that our host communities know, uh, what work we're doing. We do reach out to, uh, the police and fire departments uh, and make certain that, and to the town managers to make certain that, uh, everyone is aware of the work that we're doing. Um, and, and that we inconvenience everyone, uh, as little as possible in terms of the work that we need to do on an almost one hundred-year-old bridge. So, um, the three major things that I, I wanted to raise tonight, the three projects, we get many questions about the rideability of the Mount Hope Bridge, the surface. Um, and, and I will, uh, let my, my director of engineering speak to the distinction between rideability and safety. But as to the rideability, we will be doing an overlay on the bridge. We will be doing that in the months ahead. We have already had a meeting with police and fire and town managers from both Bristol and Portsmouth to try and decide how best to get that done, what the logistics will be. Uh, there will be a need to, uh, obviously to, to put any kind of a new surface on the, on the bridge. We will need to restrict traffic. Uh, it, we've, we've considered various options. The one that is looking the most feasible and the probably best way to get this project gone, done is that there would be a closure of the bridge for a couple of days. Um, that, when exactly that would be, we have not, um, we have not set the date yet. Uh, we certainly would not do it before the Fourth of July for obvious reasons. Um, and so.
Be able to close it for a little bit, but that's about it.
So then if July, we also would be mindful of other events that are going on, um, in, in the towns. And also we would be mindful of the return of students to Roger Williams at the end of August. So, um, uh, it'll be, you know, we will, we will make a decision. We'll give ample notice to the, uh, to the, the users, all the commuters and those who, who depend upon the bridge. Um, we did consider various options where we would close only one direction at a time. That does not seem to be the, the best way to go. So I think what we're looking at here is one or two weekends. Perhaps an extended weekend that includes one weekday, um, where the, the bridge would be closed in both directions so that we could get this overlay done. Um, I'll leave the details. If you have some questions for my director of engineering, I just wanted to go over the other two things. When we came before you a few years ago, we talked about dehumidification of the Mount Hope Bridge. It is, again, ninety-six years old. Um, the cables need a system. It's called a dehumidification system. We have done a lot of work. We have, uh, our own funding and federal funding that we, uh, expect to receive to do the dehumidification. And what that does is, um, it, it, we would be, uh, uh, we have, we are prepared to build a dehumidification system that would, uh, blow, uh, dehumidified air into, into the cables to, to make, uh, to arrest the corrosion of the many wires that make up the cables of the Mount Hope Bridge. Um, so it's, um, it's relatively new technology, but we believe very successful technology. Um, it would be, I believe, only the seventh or eighth bridge in the country to have, uh, this system. We're also going to do a dehumidification system on the Pell Bridge. And if a new bridge were built today, it would include a dehumidification system. So that's the second thing we wanted to mention to you. Um, we've also, I, I know last year we reached out in the spring and we were doing some, um, cable airflow testing for that dehumidification system. We made certain, we, we promised you we would finish it before the Roger Williams commencement and we did meet that deadline. So, um, we do our best to keep our promises. Um, and then lastly, uh, we get asked, when are you going to replace the deck altogether? Um, and the, that is programmed into our capital plan. We do see that probably in the capital plan about five years out. We have, um, already, um, put out a, a, a request for a consultant um, to design that, um, that, uh, total deck replacement, which would take place. The dehumidification, just, just to go back to that one for a minute, because the other question that I get asked is when are you going to start planning the construction of a new bridge? Um, in fact, um, the, uh, the George Washington Bridge in New York underwent, uh, dehumidification and other upgrades, um, in the last couple of years. And, uh, the, and New York is saying that they intend to get another hundred years. It opened the same year as the Mount Hope Bridge. So they're expecting, uh, that they'll get another, we have been saying, we'll get another fifty to seventy-five years out of the Mount Hope Bridge. Um, I know, I, I, I will, uh, I'll let you ask any questions you like, uh, more, more specifics about any of the, the three projects we've mentioned. Obviously, we, we do regular inspections of the bridge and we do any other work that needs to be done as we identify that work to be done. We have, we have both in, um, in-house maintenance uh, staff who do some of the work on the bridge, and we also have consultants and, uh, you know, that we engage for specific projects that are beyond the capabilities of what we have in-house. So.
Is there a plan built in when the, uh, bridge does close for rerouting that traffic? Are you?
Yes.
Are you guys all?
So signage, such and so forth?
There would be signage. There would be, as I say, there would be ample notice. Um, you know, I, 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 I'm sure, you know, back in I, is it eighty-five or eighty-six? I think the bridge was closed for the better part of a year. We're talking, we hope, two to three days. Um, perhaps two weekends. Um, but, uh, you know, we, but it will, we have to do it. And yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Yep. And, and, and yes, we have been meeting with police and reaching out, police, fire, first responders. Um, how, uh, you know, we would make certain, obviously, that any first responders that are transporting, uh, patients would, would know, uh, would know ahead of time what's, what the situation is.
So I think I have a, this is probably a questionnaire. Uh, I'm sorry, Tim.
No, I was just saying, good, it's great. I just, that was the answer I wanted to hear. I just wanted to make sure there was something in place and I were, on the record, we were talking about it. So.
So two questions. One is the overlay is, how long does it last? And when it's done, is that going to increase the weight limit of the bridge?
And I'm going to let Eric, um, he's been patient too.
Thank you, Eric.
So I'll give you a quick overview of how the overlay will work. We first will go out with a micro grinding machine and take off about a half to three quarters of an inch of the existing material that's on the bridge. Um, and then we put back basically the same oil. So you're not increasing any of the dead load to the bridge by doing so, which is trying to get the surface, all, all the irregularities taken down. We know we'll be left with holes and patches to fill. Uh, but the new paving process, which is called an ultra-thin bonded overlay paving process, would basically fill all of the, uh, depressions and dips that will be left after the grinding machine and cleanup happens. And it'll be basically a nice screeded out surface that'll get rolled out, just like you would see a normal road would get paved. Uh, it's just, it's a thin layer. It's, it's a polymer-based material. And, you know, we're hoping to get somewhere between three to five years out of it, which is it kind of falls in line with our plan for eventual deck replacement of the bridge. You know, if it, if for some reason because of the condition, um, it has to be redone in three years or so, we can always investigate doing that again if we're not, you know, if we have to bridge more time to get the deck replaced. But we've looked at other options like chip seal, which has been done in the past. I don't like that process. I think it's not going to improve the rideability of the bridge. This new process is something that Massachusetts, uh, Mass Highway has been using to rejuvenate miles and miles of their major highways, four ninety-five, uh, a, a whole bunch of their highways up, up, uh, up at their end. Nobody's done it in Rhode Island, but we would like to do it on the Mount Hope Bridge. We've had discussions with the contractor that, that ended up winning the bid and feel very confident that this is going to be the best way to, uh, extend the life of the deck while we plan its replacement. So, and get rideability back. So.
What about weight limit?
The weight limit won't change because like I said, we're, we're taking off about the same amount of material that we'll end up putting back. Um, speaking about the rideability of the deck, there's been concerns about the safety of the bridge. The rideability has zero to do with the safety of the bridge. The structural portion of the deck is actually encapsulated underneath all of the riding surface. It's basically the steel grid that, that is, that is filled with concrete. Only the steel grid is the structural part of the bridge, the concrete that fills it. And all of the riding surface that you ride on has nothing to do with the structural capacity of the, the bridge deck at all.
Perception is reality, though.
Perception is reality. So that's where, you know, where we're trying to address the rideability of the bridge for, for not just perception, but also just to, to have a better riding experience. But it will help the perception of the bridge as well, certainly.
I ask about the weight because I thought it, it, am I wrong? Did it go down recently? Did it change recently?
It went down in twenty twenty-two due to a change in the load rating manual that is a federal guideline. It had nothing to do with condition of the bridge. It was, it had all to do with the as-built condition of the bridge from nineteen twenty-nine. Um, and how the, the, the way the bridge was built gets applied to this new rating manual. That was the only reason that, that the, the load rating went down.
So it hasn't changed in the sense of it's, it's the same bridge, it can do the same thing.
Bridge is.
We just have to comply to a more difficult standard, is that?
That's right. That's right.
Interesting. Okay.
Deck replacement. Um, how long are we looking at for, like, what's downtime for a deck replacement?
That is to be determined. So as Laurie mentioned, we're, we went out to RFQ for consultant selection. We have, uh, I think there's eight proposals we have in from different consultants. We're going to go through the review process. And our goal is to select one, not just to design the deck. It, that's part, that can be part of the scope if they perform well in the beginning portion. But really, the first thing is to look at concepts for the deck. Um, what types of deck could we use? How can we get the bridge deck built? That's one of the most important things is how do we, how do we build it and keep the bridge serviceable to some degree, right? Um, and then ultimately, based on that, the results of that report, if we, if we're satisfied with the performance of that consultant, we can continue on and go through full design. We've looked at, um, you know, there, there's going to be options on the table. One of the, one option has to be full bridge closure. You have to talk about it at least. Has to be on the table. But we've looked at all the innovative things that other places have used. Um, one, one sister agency with, with similar suspension bridges actually replaced their entire superstructure of the bridge. So basically everything that hangs from the cables, they replaced it two sections at a time over weekend closures and pinned it to the old, pinned the new section to the old section and had it open. and had it open from Monday to Friday during the week, for the whole week commute. And they proceeded along that line until they got all the way across the bridge doing weekend closures for their entire superstructure replacement. So that intrigued us and that will be certainly the types of things that we'll be looking at so that we can help, you know, people be able to get across the bridge and not have to close it for a year like was done back in nineteen eighty-five, eighty-six timeframe.
Well, I think even if you had the three-day weekend and you had the Monday or something like that, you know, as long as the word is getting out, as Congressman Sweeney said, as long as there's an aggressive effort to get the word out, people will be able to like maybe work from home that day or something like that, so. But there's always going to be people that have to use that bridge, right?
That's right.
But ultimately, yeah, a lot of people can plan their lives around it too, so.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're all about the public outreach and starting with the overlay, we'll be doing the public outreach well in advance so that people know, hey, this is coming. Maybe we don't go from Bristol to Portsmouth that weekend or Portsmouth to Bristol, or we plan on driving around. We don't, we don't want to catch anybody by surprise, so.
Any other questions from the council?
Just a brief comment, I, I ride that bridge five days a week.
I do, why?
You do, okay. Go to the little town. But anyway, with that being said, I've noticed it's a little smoother. Today, the ride seemed to be a little smoother, you know, so we appreciate, you know, the touch-ups in filling in some of those big potholes.
Thank you very much. One of the, one of the factors that affects the rideability is speed. So I'm not a, I'm not, you know, a real speedy driver. And you'll find that it's a better ride if you do the speed limit on the bridge.
That explains a lot. I find it very bumpy.
Is that why it was smoother?
You weren't speeding, Tony.
Any other questions from the council?
No, Mr. Chairman? We did have a very good meeting with the director and the, the chief engineer. And one of the concerns that I raised certainly was taking into account that we've got the Washington Bridge and the Pell Bridge was under construction. And I did ask for if it's feasible for them to have a traffic safety or traffic mitigation engineer work on putting together a plan, we're going to have to get those signs out as far as one ninety-five, Route six, one thirty-six. We've got to educate people before they get on to, you know, we're headed, you know, that way off of the major thoroughwear rather than going around twenty-four, you know, which will do that. So I think that that's a great recommendation that could come, as Tim said, we've, we've got to get ahead of traffic. Folks are taxed, you know, with all of the backups of the Washington Bridge and the other delays in the state.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. One last thing, Mr. Chair, I think you and I had spoken about the flag on the Mount Hope Bridge and I did see some, some, I think some media posts recently. It's a challenge to fly the American flag on the, on the Mount Hope Bridge because of weather, both, and it's not just rain, but it's also wind. It's very difficult for us to do that, but we are going to do that this year, so.
Outstanding.
We have not done it for a couple of years and I just wanted you to know that you should see it, weather permitting, you should see it on the Fourth of July.
Outstanding, thank you, outstanding.
Thank you very much.
I just need Eric's last name for the record, that's, if you don't mind.
Eric, what's your last name?
Yeah, it's Seabury, S-E-A-B-U-R-Y.
Thank you.
So we just need a motion to receive and file, I would say.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion? Thank you on behalf of the council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is bid ten sixty-eight, the road resurfacing project. We had the bid opening today at twelve, we received eight bids for that project. The first bid was from T. Myozie Inc. and that is in the amount of two million eight hundred thousand twenty-one dollars. The second one was from J. H. Lynch and Sons Inc. in the amount of three million nine hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred and seventy. The third one was from Vinago Materials LLC in the amount of two million one hundred ninety-three dollars, six hundred and, I'm sorry, two million one hundred ninety-three thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. The fourth one was from Belo Soul and Sons Construction in the amount of two million three hundred ninety thousand two hundred twelve dollars and forty cents. The next one was from Narragansett Improvement Company in the amount of three million four hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars. The next one was Tuckett Hot Mix Asphalt Inc. And that was in the amount of two million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty. The next one was from De Amber Construction Company Incorporated and that was in the amount of three million one hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And then the last one was from PJ Keating Company in the amount of three million two hundred seventy-three thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Wow. I shake my head and the variables here are just tremendous.
Wow.
Wow. And the dollars, of course. Council?
I make a motion, we refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion?
Yes, just a quick question, have we ever dealt with Vinago Materials?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we used them last year. Yeah, we had success with them.
They were good, they did a good job, no complaints, you know.
It's a different company than, from the past and all the towns that I'm familiar with that have used them have been incredibly impressed by that.
And they're the least expensive.
Well, that helps.
Yes.
Even, even Myozie, I'm surprised that they back again, I thought they had been purchased by Lynch. But anyway, we, we can skip them.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J two. And this is bid ten sixty-nine for the municipal tree maintenance and stump grinding service. You will see that there are attachments added at your received at meeting, meeting, I mean, agenda item there on the dais. There are three bids that were received. I'm going to ask that we accept those attachments as presented, considering there's about fifteen to twenty items per-
We'll stipulate.
Thank you. I'd like you to read them all.
Can we have a motion?
I make a motion, we refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
There is K one, this is the tri-town monthly meeting report from May twenty twenty-five.
Motion to receive and file, second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to forty-two, forty-six, five, eight, five, relative to the acquisition or disposition of public property as well as forty-two, forty-six, five, A seven. A matter related to the question of the investment of public funds where the premature disclosure would adversely affect the public interest. Public funds shall include any investment plan or matter related thereto, including but not limited to state lottery plans for new promotions.
Council?
Make a motion, we-
As stated?
As stated.
As stated, keep it simple, right?
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, any discussion? This ends the broadcast, we will go into executive session, we will come out of executive session in public to complete this regular meeting, but thank you all and have a good night.